Good afternoon. Want to welcome all of you who've joined with us this afternoon for the August 23, 2007 meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. And I know we have a fairly full room today and may have others joining us, so we'll get into our agenda in just a moment. We just announced, though, at the beginning that if you wish to address the board on any item that's on the agenda or not on the agenda, we'd ask that you please fill out a speaker request form. Make sure that our clerk or one of the ladies in the back gets that. And you can see they're waving their hands up there. They're the ones with the smiling faces and standing by the doors there. And we'll do our best to get down through the hearing throughout the course of the afternoon and give everybody opportunity to talk. I will just say, too, that I know we have a couple of elected officials that will be joining us at different times today, and so just give you advance notice because of their schedules, not unlike your schedules, but they've made previous arrangements, and so we'll take their commentary and certainly stay on course with those that have submitted in the order that I received them. And with that, depending upon how many speakers sign up, we normally have a three-minute rule, but if we have many, many dozens, we may have to go to two minutes, but we'll see how that works its way out as we get into the afternoon hearing. So with that notice, let's go ahead and call the roll to get started, and Flo, if you'll do that, please.
Sure. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Sunday, August 27th, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please take a moment to silence your electronic devices.
Okay. Thank you, Flo. With that, then Supervisor Frost, would you at least send the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Thanks.
(inaudible)
Okay. We only have a couple of items on the agenda, but obviously one that will take up the balance of the afternoon. So with that, do we have any items to be continued, or?
I do. For your first item, appointments from your own ranks to the Safety Net Committee, we would like to go ahead and hold that. The county exec will work with the chair's office and come back at a later time.
Okay. All right. So we'll hold item one, so we don't need a motion to continue. We'll just pull the item? Is that what we do?
Yep.
Okay. All right. And with that, I had no one sign up on item one, so we'll go to the item, and I think everybody's here on, and that's item two. You're going to call that.
Okay. And that's the report back on parkways and unincorporated communities cleanup and safety initiatives.
All right. Thank you. All right. Mr. Leonard, you going to introduce the item, or Mr. Gill, or you?
Mr. Leonard has it.
Mr. Leonard, oh, Mr. Leonard, okay.
Right.
If you want to raise the podium, Rob?
Yeah.
Button's right.
I got it.
So we could...
So, good afternoon, Chair Natoli, members of the board, Rob Leonard, Deputy County Executive. The report and presentation that I'm about to begin has been developed to provide a foundation for the board's discussion of illegal camping enforcement and community cleanup activities, focusing in areas of the parkways of Sacramento County and the community. The issues, as I mentioned in my introductory comments on July 11th, are complex and dynamic and interrelated in that for every action, there's a reaction of some form. The report that I'm going to present to you was the product of a collaborative effort by many of the departments of the county, just about every one of which is represented here in the chambers today, and we're all here to support the discussion of the board this afternoon. I want to mention at the outset, there are several graphics in the presentation that contain a lot of numbers, and some of those numbers may be a bit small, difficult to see on the screen, and so we've made hard copies, and they're on the back table for anybody to grab of those graphics. And so as a means of background, during the fiscal year 2017, 2018 budget hearings, the board directed the county executive to come back with options to address illegal camping and its impact in the parkways, as I mentioned, specifically defined for the purpose of this discussion is the American River Parkway and the Dry Creek Parkway, and also the communities of the unincorporated area of the county. Those, for definition purposes, are again considered to include residential neighborhoods and also our commercial and retail areas. The board provided further direction to say that we should assume funding at alternative levels of $3 million, $4 million, and $5 million, and that we also were to examine other issues related to this, including the addition of a community prosecutor, the current definition of our chronic nuisance offender, potential animal care support for our illegal camping and homeless programs out in the community, and then of some significance, the sequencing of any additional efforts with our homeless initiatives that have been developed and approved by the board through the proposed budget process to this point, and we'll be talking about a bit more as this presentation moves forward. On July 11th, the board directed us to come back on this date, this afternoon, and present to you further analysis of what we identified as option one. Option one, we presented two options on that July 11th date. Option one was a model where essentially status quo, where we would be using Department of Regional Parks resources, the Rangers and our debris removal teams to address issues in the parkway, and then the Sheriff's Hot Team or Homeless Outreach Team to address issues in the unincorporated area communities. Option two was one which would see us introduce the Hot Team or the Sheriff's Model into the parkways. And the board directed us essentially to move forward with a deeper examination of option one. So that's what I'll be doing today, is I will not be presenting further analysis of introduction of sheriff resources into the parkways. On July 11th, the board also directed us to examine funding sources other than the county general fund to support this effort at any funding scenario. Also, again, reiterating the interest to see a community prosecutor and an animal care control officer focused on our efforts to address homeless illegal camping in the parkways primarily, but then also in the communities. And then again, the timing sequencing of the additional efforts with our homeless initiatives. Quick background, multiple jurisdictions currently enforce many laws and regulations in Sacramento County. The sheriff has the lead in the unincorporated areas, regional parks in the parkways, and we continue that model moving ahead. City of Sacramento also has certain responsibilities in more or less a support role. However, they are the lead law enforcement agency in that area of the American River Parkway that is in the city of Sacramento. The primary day-to-day activity is conducted by our county Rangers with criminal action follow-up at times provided by Sacramento PD. Sacramento Animal Care also provides support for illegal camping activities in the city portion of the American River Parkway and is a backup county animal care, provides that support under our existing scenario today. And Sacramento City Fire is responsible for fire and emergency medical response in, again, the city portion of the American River Parkway. There is an area of the parkway that is owned by the state that is associated with Cal Expo. City of Rancho Cordova carries similar responsibilities to the city of Sacramento for that area of the parkway that's in the city of Rancho Cordova. And then Metro Fire, primary fire response in the unincorporated area of the American River Parkway, and then also the emergency medical response also in that area. Our current efforts, regional parks, as I mentioned, our Ranger teams enforce illegal camping, and debris removal is handled by our debris removal teams specifically. The debris removal team, an important distinction, is not associated necessarily with day-to-day operations and maintenance or cleanup throughout the parkways. The debris removal team specifically focuses on camp cleanup. We have other park staff that deal with that regular routine maintenance, emptying trashcans and cleaning up picnic areas and other portions of the parkway. I might also add that, I mentioned our Ranger teams dealing with illegal camping. We do have a Parks Response Team whose primary focus is dealing with illegal camping enforcement, and that team focuses in the geographic areas of the parkways where the need is most. That team deals on a complaint response or observation response basis, but then they're also proactive in their travels through the parkway. Our Rangers, our regular patrol Rangers, also engage in illegal camping enforcement, but that's not their primary focus. That's not their primary core activity. The Parks Response Team, that group that deals exclusively with camping enforcement, they work four days a week. But the Rangers, the patrol Rangers who are engaging in illegal camping enforcement along with their other duties, they're out there seven days a week, as I mentioned. But the level of effort is definitely greater and more focused during the four days a week that we have the Parks Response Team in place. As I mentioned, our response to illegal camping is significantly complaint-driven, but we do deal with response to illegal camps in the normal course of business throughout the day. Our 1718 recommended budget, which is before the board in June, and will be back before you for final consideration on September 6th, identifies $1.528 million associated with illegal camping and cleanup activities. And then also in the recommended budget back in June, the board supported an additional $449,000 to be dedicated to debris removal and a visitor services team that's out there engaging with all users of the parkway during hours, different hours of the day when the Rangers aren't there. And that program has started. It has rolled out, and it's beginning to have a visible presence in the parkway, and people will be seeing it more and more. The Parks Resource Team, the table at the bottom of this slide, the numbers through April 30th, 2017 are the numbers that I presented to you on July 11th. We've updated this data to show through July 31st, the number of arrests, camps contacted, illegal camping citations, and tons of debris cleared. And again, this is both American River and Parkway and Dry Creek Parkway. The predominant portion of this is the American River Parkway.
Rob, before you leave that slide, maybe just clarification, and I see Supervisor Serna had a question as well. Back to the previous slide.
Okay.
So through July 31st, is that a calendar year, or is that?
That's since the Parks Resource Team began its activity in that current configuration. I believe that's January of 2017. So that's calendar year through those dates.
Okay. So about a six-and-a-half-month period of time?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm glad you stopped the slideshow here. The $1.5 million as part of the recommended budget there. Now, is the $3, $4, and $5 million option, options that are before us today, is that inclusive of that, or is it in addition to that?
It would be additive to that.
Okay. And then my other question is, and maybe this is, again, best suited for Chief Ranger, you have a table of arrests here in addition to other things through different time periods. I'd like, again, just to hear publicly for this audience that's joined us today, for all of us to understand, what are the arrests for? Are the arrests for camping? Are the arrests for too many citations for illegal camping? What are the arrests for, generally?
Certainly. While Mike is, while Mike Donar, Chief Ranger, is on his way down, again, when questions like this come up, we'll certainly, as I said, we have a great bench. We've had a great team preparing this information to you, and we'll defer to the experts.
Good afternoon, Mike Donar, Chief Ranger. The majority of the arrests are for penal code, vehicle code violations. We did make two arrests specifically for illegal camping, but that wasn't related to, they had gone to a warrant. So a judge, they failed to show up a number of times, and a judge finally issued a warrant. So out of all those arrests, I believe there were only two specifically for warrants issued for illegal camping. Other than that, they're all penal code and vehicle code.
So examples of penal code violations would be what?
Domestic violence, public intoxication, batteries, those type of violations.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Frost, and Supervisor Peters.
How long does it take, or how many citations until a warrant is issued? And are those that became warrants involving battery and those kind of, or are they just because they had so many citations and they just didn't come in?
A lot of times, it's not the number of citations, it's the number of failures to appear in front of the judge. So many times, you're able to, a judge will allow you to cite people out on a failure to appear, but there comes a time, if they continue to fail to show up, a judge will issue an actual physical arrest warrant form, which is a command for us to take them into custody so that they can be held accountable for that outlying charge.
So is it safe to say, though, that the average homeless person who receives a citation is pretty much not going to respond to it, or, I mean, as a general rule?
I wouldn't say that, because the actual, like, this year alone, there's only been two physical arrests for warrants issued for illegal camping that I'm aware of. So there are other programs that other people can speak to better than I, but they have court services for homeless, like at Loaves and Fishes, for example, that they can clear those citations up.
And so when those people are driving, floating down the river, and they see encampments on the side, if they call and report to your office, do you go out and issue a citation at that point in time as an on-call basis?
If it's a, if it's a call for service like that, yes, it will be dispatched out. If we don't get it to it that day, we try to touch it within 12 hours. If it's an occupied camp, they would receive a citation. If it's an unoccupied camp, it would be posted. And then our Park Resource Team, they actively go out and engage in illegal camping that's officer-initiated.
And since we made the adjustments in April or May, we made some adjustments to the teams and how they were dispatched, do you feel that's improved the impact on the parkway a little bit?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Peters?
Thank you. To go back to, I think Supervisor Serna was talking to you about this, about the people who've gotten penal citations, you called it?
Our arrests are from the penal code like any other police.
So are those mostly people out on parole or bail, or you were describing some of the crimes, let's say?
A lot of the arrests that the parkrangers make are warrant arrests, and the majority of those are people who failed to appear for battery, domestic violence, possession of narcotics arrests.
Failure to appear. So they've committed some crime at whatever level, and they have not appeared in court?
Correct. And then the majority of our misdemeanor citations that we make, a lot of it has to do with possession of narcotics, which are all misdemeanors now under the new guidelines.
Right. Since Prop 47, it's, hmm. Do you, I know you're not a representative of the Sheriff's Department, but would most of these people be in jail if we didn't have AB-109, Prop 47, and Prop 57, where they were let go early or not taken into jail initially?
The sheriff would be best to answer that. I don't know what their population, their daily populations and how long they can keep people. I would be uncomfortable answering that question.
Okay. Well, then, maybe...
We do have sheriff representative.
Oh, great.
Good afternoon, Chief Deputy Phil Brel, G. Sheriff's Department. I think if I understood your question, you're asking how many of those people could be AB-109ers, Prop 47, those type of people that would be in custody now that are out?
Yeah.
We do not track that specifically to the arrests or the citations, so it's not something we compare, so I don't know how many of them are AB-109ers at the Rangers you're contacting or Prop 47.
Well, and 57 now, you know, where they're letting people go from the state jails, state prisons?
Yes.
So you don't keep track of that?
We do keep track of the ones that are released, but I'm not comparing, in other words, I'm not comparing their citations to whether they are an AB-109er. That's something we're not tracking on their behalf.
Okay. Well, I'm just trying to understand how many were really, had mental health problems or alcohol and drug addiction versus criminals that aren't being prosecuted for some reason, or the sentencing has changed?
I don't know if I could answer that for you specifically.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, good. Thanks, chief. Just before, Chief Don, I want to ask just a question. This kind of relates to some of the coverage of the past couple of weeks on this, obviously leading to today's hearing. But in one of the television reports, a couple of parties were contacted that were camping down the parkway, and they alluded to the fact that they hadn't been contacted by anybody in four months. Now, whether that was true or not, obviously, you know, taking it face value, but we're down there regularly, there's obviously call-ins, and you have teams that are attempting to, I think, assist folks, certainly not only just knowing the rules, but if there are other assistance that we can offer through the partner agencies. But I guess I just, your reaction to that is, you know, I have no idea where they were, maybe other members of the board do, when they were made contact, but, I mean, when we hear about contacts, and certainly in an area where we've had a lot of focus of the discussion on that lower six miles of the parkway, but anywhere along the parkway, including the Dry Creek Parkway, any thoughts about that? Is that, you know, again, that's what they said, they may have been contacted. I'm just curious, though, because I think, you know, what was projected, at least in that segment of the story, was is that, you know, you folks are doing what you can, but it's a bit overwhelming, and I don't know if that's the case or not. And so I'd just like to hear your thoughts about that as we kind of embark upon this discussion here today. We're going to hear a lot of different points of view, but, I mean, could somebody be pretty close to, you know, deep, deep in the woods and still not have been contacted, and we've not posted a camp and made any contact over that period of time?
Is that a possibility? It's always a possibility. I mean, there's a lot of acreage associated with regional parks, and if they're, if they are dug into a spot that is not serviced frequently, there is the possibility. You know, we spend a lot of time along the multi-use trail, along the fire roads, along the levee structure, and responding to citizen complaints. So it is a possibility that that occurs, but I think that would be rare.
Okay. And maybe just, not getting ahead of Rob's presentation or discussion, but what's being proposed under one of the scenarios, but say the scenario that would provide the greatest staffing, then would that fill in a lot of those gaps, not just on the daily coverage, but also on the ability then to go, you know, into areas that, you know, may be inhabited, so to speak, but where you haven't been able to make the contact? And/or if you've contacted folks, then they go in deeper, and so, you know, the presence is there, but we really aren't making contact in a way that, you know, could offer people help and services in addition to, obviously, informing them, obviously, you know, what the conditions are for being present in the parkway, so.
The seven, being able to provide seven-day coverage on this effort would be, is a critical component. The patrol Rangers, especially during the summer season, you know, from 10 o'clock in the morning to about 5:00, they're dealing with a lot of rafting events and water recreation that consumes a lot of their time. So having seven-day coverage, I think, would have a significant impact on trying to stay on top of the issue. So when the Park Resource Team leaves, you know, it falls back on the patrol Rangers, and so I think there would be a significant impact with the seven-day coverage.
Okay. Because it would complement, but also they can give the patrol Rangers where they call off, you know, at different times as well, depending upon the nature of the event, but you would have a better dispersment of folks and a bigger contingent as well, so.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks, chief. Okay. Any other questions? If not, Rob?
Okay. As this slide focused on the efforts that's focused in the parkways, this slide focuses on the efforts of the Sheriff's Department in the unincorporated communities. There, as I mentioned earlier, the sheriff has deployed a model referred to as the Homeless Outreach Team or HOT Team. There is a single HOT Team that works homeless-related and camping-related issues in the unincorporated area. There's also a smart policing initiatives, a grant-funded team that is some part-time retired deputies, as I recall, that engages with SAC Steps Forward and others, trying to provide linkages between individuals engaged in the community and support resources. Again, the HOT Team, somewhat like the Rangers, there are a lot of complaints, and their efforts during the course of a typical day are focused on responding to complaints that have come in. The recommended budget for 1718 is $628,000 for the HOT Team effort, and again, the projected annual activity, and I assume that would be for 2017, is identified here at the bottom of the slide. These are the same numbers that I presented to you in July. With that, then, I think it's important to spend a bit of time on the homeless initiatives, and I'm going to turn the podium over to Paul Lake.
Afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Paul Lake, Deputy County Executive, Social Services. Sacramento County, in partnership with contractors and advocates and cities within our county, provides a broad array of services to assist homeless individuals and families with finding housing and engaging in programs that can help them, including Sacramento County paying for hundreds of shelter and permanent supportive housing beds throughout the community. In June, the board added to that capacity and approved several new initiatives to focus even more on getting people into housing, especially those who are typically very difficult to get into housing and to help maintain housing. We've added, we are working on creating a full-service rehousing shelter. This will be an invitation-only shelter. It's not going to be a walk-in shelter. It's not going to be a drop-off shelter. Wherein, we spend 30 to 60 days with each person, providing them with the immediate services they need, mental health services, substance abuse services, help with their driver's license, all kinds of assistance, and, most importantly, providing them with rehousing assistance so we can move them out of a shelter and into some level of permanent housing. In conjunction with that, the board also approved pursuing a flexible supportive rehousing program in which we engage a provider under contract to focus on targeted individuals using data regarding high-end users of our services, such as jail services, mental health services, et cetera, and providing them with a full range of wraparound services and case management wherein we do whatever is necessary to help them get into housing and help get them stabilized. This program's going to take advantage of the new, 150 new housing choice vouchers that are specifically set aside each year from SHRA, targeting homeless folks. So that's going to be an important component of what we do to add capacity for places to provide housing to people who are homeless. We also, the county is also continuing its funding of emergency shelters and supporting Mather Community Campus, and we are restoring up to 25 units of transitional housing that are currently being lost due to lost federal funding from HUD and through our CalWorks program. In addition to these initiatives, we're also working on the No Place Like Home initiative, which will bring funding into the county to provide additional housing projects for homeless people who are suffering from mental illness, and we have other programs such as CalWorks, the Permanent Supportive Housing Program, and various others. So there's a lot of work to provide the housing capacity out there. Currently, we exceed 7, 800 units out there of permanent supportive housing that the county helps support and provide.
Excuse me, apologize for a second. Supervisor Serna, Supervisor Peters?
Yeah, before you leave that slide, Paul, if you can go back, please. Just because it wasn't mentioned, it's not shown here, and just to clarify, the full-service shelter, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're estimating that once that's up and running, it's not just going to serve 75 people, and we call it good, it's going to serve... just going to serve 75 people, and we call it good, it's going to serve somewhere in the neighborhood of 300 people a year.
Yeah, it will serve 75 people at any given point in time, and with, you know, 30, 60, 90-day average, then that would total out to about 300 approximately per year.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
Supervisor Peters?
Well, that was the exact same thing, point I was going to make, because I think in your presentations going forward, and I've asked for it a couple of times, you ought to be talking about the annual number, you can say 75 beds, annualized at 352, or whatever the number is, in all of your presentations.
Okay.
Because it really is helping more people than just this number of beds.
Thank you, I will do that.
Yeah, thanks, appreciate that.
I think I went too far here. Yesterday, there was a presentation, I'm sorry, we don't have the, here we go, we have it as an overhead. This chart reflects a decision that the Board made yesterday, acting as the County Housing Authority, to allocate 187 new project-based vouchers to the county's supply of housing for homeless individuals and families, this increase represents an additional substantial increase in the housing capacity for people seeking to get off the streets and will be an important component of all of our initiative efforts, so I wanted to point that out as well.
I would say, again, Paul, this is something, when you see a total of 443, that's all great, but maybe because we talked to so many different people about what's available, there should be 443 new ones adding to a total of X, so, just so people have an idea of how many beds and rooms are available.
Okay, we will do that.
Thanks so much.
Good, thank you, Paul. Other questions? If not, Rob?
Picking up on the issues related to the discussion, so we've talked about the parkways and the unincorporated communities and the status of our homeless initiatives, issues that were, have been, related issues that have been introduced into the discussion, the community prosecutor, as that discussion has evolved at the staff level, it's defined as being supportive rather than as a formal prosecutor as part of your homeless initiatives, we're starting to see that happen with some of the existing activities of our current community prosecutors, and what's on the table for discussion is the addition of a community prosecutor, which would create more capacity to engage with individuals that are coming off of the parkways or in the community and in need of resources. The cost identified, $230,000 ongoing and $24,600 one-time, has been updated, it's slightly changed from the July 11th presentation, but not significantly. Chronic nuisance actions, now, we have, following up the Board meeting on July 11th, a working group has created, has been created out of the County Executive's Office, it's working with the District Attorney, the Sheriff, Regional Parks, and County Council, examining our existing structure of ordinances and regulations and the definition of certain activities and as they are categorized as, say, for example, an infraction versus a misdemeanor, and is that, how do we stack up within the region in terms of classification of violations, and then where might we be in terms of potential recommended modifications to that structure, which would come forward to the Board in the future, and how might that work in concert with additional capacity with a community prosecutor program? So that work is underway right now, and we're targeting to be back before the Board by November 1st with some recommended actions on that front.
Supervisor Frost?
Rob, I wonder what kind of, can you give me an example of the kind of resources that someone on the parkway would utilize with a prosecutor that they're not already provided with our public defender or other departments?
Really, what, the resources are already there, this doesn't generate new resources, what it would do is generate a, perhaps a stronger, more clearly-defined means of connecting individuals that are engaged out on the parkway with mental health issues or substance abuse issues with those resources that are available, so it's really about connecting the individuals with resources, and then in concert with that is, an important piece is, the additional capacity, what Paul was talking about earlier, in terms of building capacity for these individuals to be connected with, so it's really not, we're not developing new programs with this effort, it's a matter of connecting individuals that we're engaging in the parkways and the community with resources that are available.
But isn't that what the navigators do, I mean, do we need a prosecutor to do that, to connect them with resources?
This would be supplementing what the navigators do, and it's dealing with individuals that have been cited on more than one occasion, where essentially, this is dealing with a more difficult individuals when it comes to connecting with resources beyond the navigator interaction, say, for example, on the street or in the parkway.
But we don't already have representation for indigents such as that?
We do, this would be adding additional capacity, and Paul, if you would like to comment?
But it's not representation for indigents, it's a counter.
Coordination.
Yeah.
I suspect that the community prosecutors would bring a different dynamic to the conversation of getting someone to agree to engage in services than a typical navigator would, and it would not be the same type of representation that a public defender would offer, obviously, the community prosecutor represents the District Attorney as opposed to the public defender. On the other side of the courtroom.
For instance, though, Paul, just because there's a lot of circumstance on the parkway, the folks that are feeling their only choice is to be there, where they're without shelter, but they might have outstanding warrants for things other than the citations relative to illegal camping, correct me if I'm wrong, but the community prosecutor could actually assist with expediting the right way to clear the warrants, if they have outstanding warrants, assuming it's a low enough infraction, in addition to the exercise of connecting them to homeless services, addiction services, mental health services.
I would surmise that would be correct, but, you know, I think that's a better question for the District Attorney's Office.
But that's, isn't that what our public defender's office, we have a whole department that's already dedicated to this type of service, isn't that what they're already doing?
If there's an active case, the public defender would represent them to help them deal with whatever they're being charged with.
So the community prosecutor would just be like a high-paid navigator, basically, a high-paid, well-educated navigator?
I think the community prosecutor, the way the District Attorney explained this when we had the last meeting, is that sometimes these folks need assistance in getting linked to the appropriate level of services, and a prosecutor does have a little bit more authority than a navigator, say, you will avail yourself of these kind of services, that's what she was envisioning with the community prosecutor, that that will link the services that need to be done in more of a quasi-legal, if you will, might be legal, but in a legal setting, where the public defender comes in, is that if they get charged, then there's a defense that they have to do in the public defender's office that will defend them in court, the community prosecutor, as our understanding then, is that this will help get them to the services that they need, with some more teeth, if you will, more than the navigator, navigator basically just makes a suggestion, and that's one of the frustrations that we've had, is that they might not take the navigator's advice or where they want them to go, but if they're in front of a community prosecutor, there is that authority, more of a legal structure behind it, that was the services that the DA wanted us to incorporate this into this program, and that's what the Board heard in July, so what we're doing today is coming back and letting you know that what the community, if you were to add community prosecutor into this, what they will be doing and what the cost is associated with it.
Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Peters?
Thank you, not to belabor the issue, but somewhat along the same lines, we have community prosecutors, and I know we asked you to investigate this, so I'm not complaining about it, but to save money, could we utilize the community prosecutors that are active in Arden Arcade and Carmichael and in the city, I mean, I think the downtown district has a full-time prosecutor, community prosecutor, and they certainly are aware of the same kind of services to link up with, so could that be someplace where we get a quarter of their time of each of those, something like that?
We could certainly explore that in conversation with the DA, we have touched on it in some of our working group meetings to this point, we could certainly take that back and focus exclusively on that, using the existing resources, the existing pool of community prosecutors to support this activity.
So if some, if this initiative goes forward, then you would be looking at that before we kicked in 250,000 for 100% identified prosecutor?
If that's what the Board wishes, our understanding was you wanted us to investigate.
No, that's why I said, I know we did ask you to do this, but it was after the meeting, I thought, well, why couldn't we use the resources we already have?
Absolutely, we'll look into it.
Yeah, so we'll be following up on, continuing our work focusing on infractions versus misdemeanor and sort of the ordinance and code structure, along with this question of stretching existing resources.
Okay, all right, Supervisor, Serna?
Yeah, just real quickly, I'm glad that we're having this discussion, because I've actually met with a few of my constituents earlier this week to talk about this entire proposal and some of their concerns and some of my concerns, and there was a bit of a, there was some consternation on the, I think mostly on the term prosecutor, believing that the community prosecutor in this context, the way it's being proposed, whether it's full-time, 100% or a quarter-time, would be out just looking to arrest people on the parkway, and that's not the case here, I see your head shaking, no, can I?
Yeah, that's not the case.
Okay.
We will, this will be, once we've cited somebody, then we'll go to the community prosecutor to assist us with next steps for that individual.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
The last subject on this slide is the addition of an animal control officer, as you may recall, on July 11th, we discussed the additional resources being dedicated to the parkways to support the illegal camping activity, and we've identified the cost for the purpose of the analysis here.
Just clarification for your slide, in your first bullet under that subheading, adequate support currently from the City of Sacramento Animal Care and Sacramento Animal Care, Sacramento County Animal Care?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't have dedicated resources to the parkways today, either from the city or the county, it's more or less on an on-call or on a response basis, in the city, as I mentioned earlier, the city is the first call, if they can't respond or haven't responded within a period of time, then the Rangers will call County Animal Care, who will respond.
And who responds in the City of Rancho Cordova?
That would be the county, County Animal Care responds.
City of Rancho Cordova has their own animal services, so we handle it for City of Rancho Cordova?
Is, I'm looking at Mike and Jeff just to confirm, animal care response in Rancho Cordova is provided by the county, in the parkway.
In the parkway?
Yes.
So how can we do it there, and yet in the city, the city is the first call, in the City of Sacramento?
Proximity, I would think.
Yeah, in part proximity, and it's the precedent of how things have worked, there are relatively few animal calls, as I've heard anecdotally, within the Rancho Cordova portion of the parkway.
Okay, I was just curious, they have their own animal services, that's why I was asking.
Can I just add one thing, Mr. Chair? I just think it's important to say this, because it's a big geography, the parkway, it's 23 miles, it's about 5,000 acres, there are clearly people that have domestic animals on the parkway that are tethered legally and illegally, loose, but it's also chock-full of a lot of other non-domestic animals, so I assume that if there is a dedicated animal care and control person, officer, assigned to the parkway, that while they may not be responding to a dog bite incident every day, or a loose dog incident every day, there's probably, I'm going to go out on a limb here and say, there's enough to do in terms of responding to other animal care needs on the parkway, whether it be birds, deer, small mammals, other things, dead animals that might be on the trail, things that they'd normally respond to anyways.
There was a lot embedded in your question, and some of those functions, say, for example, removal of dead animals may well be taken care of by maintenance people as opposed to animal care call, when it comes to loose animals or animals off-leash, that may be, we may have a ranger engage with a pet owner, just advising them, so it necessarily doesn't exclusively fall to a ranger.
I do recall, though, correct me if I'm wrong, that Chief Don mentioned that in many cases, especially for medium-sized and larger dogs, that if, whatever the incident requires in terms of removing the animal from the parkway, they don't have necessarily the means to do that based on their vehicles and equipment.
That's correct, they are dependent upon others, be it the city or county animal care, to deal with larger animals, or animals that they are not comfortable or don't feel safe dealing with, that is true.
Okay, Supervisor Frost?
Does this then dedicate one person to the entire parkway, and it puts that person under our animal care, but they're dedicated to the parkway?
Yes, catching this issue coming out of July 11th, the analysis, as I'll step through in the upcoming slides, does consider the addition of an animal care officer with the associated cost to the program.
But in your report, you said the Chief Deputy Sheriff for Field and Investigative Services confirmed that the level of service that we have now with the HOT teams is adequate.
Yeah, that is correct, as it relates to the HOT teams, the second, the other question is, as it relates to the parkway, and this additional animal care officer that we're talking about here, coming out of July 11th, is focused exclusively on the parkway and not in the unincorporated area communities, that would continue to be supported as it is now by animal care on an on-call basis, so this is focused exclusively on American River Parkway and Dry Creek Parkway.
And how many calls per day do you anticipate, would you anticipate?
I would look to perhaps Mike to respond to that, as I recall, on July 11th, it was one to three calls a week was what we discussed last time, now, that's on-demand when they don't feel comfortable dealing with a situation, I'll defer to Mike.
And also, does that include us then having to buy another vehicle for them to drive around with?
Yes, it would, as you see on this slide, we have the $64,800 of one-time cost, that's vehicle-related.
The information you provide is basically correct, so it kind of goes in spurts, but maybe one to three calls per week is probably a safe estimate that we deal with animal care, whether it's an at-large dog, or when we see is a 50-pound snapping turtle that somebody released, so.
50-pound snapping turtle.
And if you worry about the boa constrictor.
That's a slow day.
That's a nasty bite.
If you worry about the boa constrictor that somebody released on the parkway, too, we apprehended that this weekend, so.
Oh, my goodness.
And we use county animal care to come, collect those animals and turn it over to the appropriate group to care for them.
Who'd you give the boa constrictor to?
Oh, yeah, he was.
I said, who'd you give him to?
Animal care, yeah, he was 10 feet.
Oh.
Yeah.
Where's he at, Dave?
Where was he?
Rogue River.
Where?
Rogue River access.
Oh.
Yeah, he made it quite a way, he was released up in Upper Sunrise, so he'd been active for a while.
Is he still out there at the shelter, Dave? Is he out of the shelter?
We got a rescue group coming.
Okay, okay, rescue group is coming to get him, so, all right.
And then, I guess my last question would be, what are we paying then for all the other services that are augmenting our needs at the parkway, I'm assuming we're paying by the call, is that costing us over a couple hundred thousand a year, 150,000 a year?
There is currently no direct cost to regional parks for support from animal, from animal care, either from the county or the city, for the calls that we mentioned.
Who pays for it?
It's paid for out of animal care's budget, which is a combination of revenue derived from fees, penalties, some from fees, penalties, some state money, and general fund allocation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Serna?
Assuming that, this is probably for you, Rob.
Okay.
Assuming that you had three calls per week, just to use a number, in the parkway, and we had a dedicated animal care and control officer whose principal area that they're supposed to serve and patrol is the parkway and the Dry Creek Parkway, let's not lose sight of that. There's nothing here that would prohibit that officer with his vehicle, with his equipment or her equipment and vehicle, to go to an adjacent, unincorporated community to provide service based on a call in that unincorporated adjacent community, correct?
No, it would all go to how we define the responsibilities for that individual. And as we've explored this, yes, we could look at stretching based upon either distance from the parkways or defined geographic areas like Fair Oaks Boulevard and Kiefer, for example.
Or, you know, if they happen to be the closest available animal care unit, and they're on the upper reach somewhere, and there's a call for service in Gold River, they might be the most appropriate to respond in a timely fashion.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, good. Okay. Related issues, briefly, again, just to pull through the related issues that the board had previously mentioned, I think we've discussed this, the relationship or sequencing between the homeless initiatives and any action your board may consider in terms of adding capacity to deal with enforcement in the parkways in the unincorporated area. That new capacity that Paul referred to is planned to come online in early 2018. Anything that we would do with parks, when we consider the staffing time and all, would come online about the same time. We may be able to accelerate certain components where we can pull off of existing hiring lists quicker to get people out. And then hot team resources, as Chief Deputy Burrell, as you mentioned previously, they could be out in the field a bit earlier because of where they are from a hiring standpoint. So they could deploy an additional hot team if resources were provided as early as November of this year. Goals for this, for the initiative. Now, this was something that we reported out, this was on July 11th. These goals were something we used to sort of guide our development and the discussion with the board. So the goals would be seven days a week illegal camping enforcement, be it in the parkways or out in the community. Seven days a week trash removal and debris removal. Connection of homeless individuals with assistance and resources, and then, of course, efficient, effective and efficient use of resources, just making sure we would be spending any money wisely. Now, this is the table that, as you may recall in the last presentation, I had highlighted a number of things, and I thought this time, it's all important. And so therefore, I'm not going to highlight the whole table. I'll just say, this, all of this data is relevant to the discussion. This is also one of the graphics that's in the package that we had hard copies for in the back of the room. And what this does is, it identifies the resources that we are, that we currently have dedicated from parks, the sheriff's department, the DA and animal care exclusively towards parkway and the community. And as you could see, we do have the hot team and the parks resource team there. When it comes to the district attorney, we don't have a community prosecutor that is exclusively dedicated to the activity that we're focusing on in this discussion. However, from time to time, there may be individuals that are going through that program with the DA's office that are being supported by that existing capacity that we have right now. How many of those individuals are regular residents of the parkway? We don't know. And then also with animal care, we talked about the resources and the level of support that animal care provides to the parkway and the sheriff's hot teams briefly, but that's not a cost that is directly assigned to that at this point in time.
Question, Supervisor Frost?
You brought something up just now, and I'm wondering if there would be a way to partner with some of the law schools and offer internships whereby they could get experience and offer help with services that would be less costly to the county in a situation like this.
I think that's something we could engage with the district attorney and perhaps county council on to see if, be it related to the community prosecutor program or other programs, if there's a way for us to tap that potential resource. We'll definitely follow up on that.
Okay, just one question for you, this chart, though. So your three, four, and five million dollar scenarios, you said it's similar to the one, if not the exact same one you presented the last time. In those, each of those funding scenarios, recognizing what you just pointed out relative to the community prosecutor and to animal care, those amounts that you have at the bottom line there, do you account for those positions, at least in this computation?
That's correct. The numbers that I mentioned earlier are reflected in this table. And you could see for the three, four, and five, when it comes to FTEs for each animal care and the community prosecutor, we've added resource.
And one thing I would just offer as we get into conversation later today, and I know we've got a lot of people who want to speak to this, but I think that it would be helpful to know, based on what you said a couple of slides earlier about implementation, certainly in concert with homeless services that have been previously authorized by this board, obviously there are some subsequent actions and stuff to follow, that what the projected cost for this fiscal year would be, these are annualized amounts, and we would have built this in for annualized amounts, but I trust from what you just said, that some of this could come on sooner than other parts of it. So that total annual amount might be the budgetary amount if you started this in June, which we haven't, and we haven't even decided yet today. So I think it would be important to know what you're going to need for this year's budget as you get into some of these other charts, because you're going to have an annualized amount, that's what you have to build into subsequent years' budget, but it wouldn't be what we'd be expanding at least this year. Is that correct?
Yes, seven months have already gone by, by January.
That is correct. What we're showing you is the full impact.
Right.
Because as you know, for next fiscal year, we have to budget.
Exactly.
A full amount.
Exactly. Okay. But just as we're looking at for this year, in light of discussions we're going to have a couple of weeks hence in the budget, so.
So we're seeking direction today, and we will have numbers refined for this fiscal year and the following fiscal year.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Evan.
Yeah, and it's actually, it jumps ahead in terms of the logic of the presentation because we have identified one-time cost and the ongoing costs. And so for some of these things, if the board decides, for example, we wanted to add an animal care officer, we would have partial year, a partial year salary and benefit cost, but we would have the full cost of the equipment acquisition, for example, to put that resource out in the field. So without going through this table, line by line, and we could certainly pursue this to whatever level of detail the board may be interested.
Just a summary, Rob, I think at this point would be important.
Yeah, at this point, you could see for the three, four, and five million dollar scenarios, how the resources begin to stack up, how the financial capacity of the larger numbers supports additional resources coming on, coming online. So with that as a backdrop for the discussion, I'll move on to the next subject, which is, how do we pay for these costs in any scenario? So we've identified a funding source that is the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. And with that as a source, we've identified 1.2 million dollars of non-fee revenue that can be used to support this program or other things that the board may be interested in. The also, and that is an ongoing source of funds that could be available for this or other things that the board may decide. The Neighborhood Revitalization Fund is, we consider one-time money. It was something that was established by the board several years ago. It's gone to support a variety of different projects within the county, good projects. It has an existing fund balance of just over a million dollars, which could also be considered as a source of funds towards this, but it's one-time. It's one-time only. Other potential sources of funding include the Regional Sanitation District. And I know a number of you or all of you have been engaged in that process, developing a program with Regional Sanitation District to award funds to different initiatives. American River and Dry Creek Parkway, but primarily American River Parkway Cleanup would be a prime candidate for funding through that program. That program is currently under development. There will be a competitive application process which will be stood up, and the county could certainly pursue those funds. In speaking with the district engineer, I asked the question, could multi-year grant awards be made? So it's not just a year-to-year. And the response to that was, yes, that is something they're looking at including in the program. Cal Recycle, moving on to another potential source of funds, there is a potential grant, one-time grant of $321,000 for debris removal. We expect to hear a decision on that coming up in the fall. And then the Parks Director, along with Britt Ferguson, our chief financial officer, have explored a number of different sources of funds, ranging from Cal Expo, which came up with essentially no financial contribution. There may be some services that we might be able to tap from time to time, but no ongoing financial support. SMMUD and PG&E, somewhat similar, be it Cal Recycle or Regional Sanitation District, they have community-focused grant programs that come up from time to time. And we may be able to benefit primarily from the standpoint of debris removal and cleanup, but not camping enforcement from those programs. And the State Water Quality Control Board, as was mentioned on July 11th, as a potential source of funds. Jeff Leatherman, Parks Director, did follow up with that. And again, it's a potential grant program that we might pursue, but no ongoing source of funds. Also, I might add to that list, County Department of Water Resources was also examined as an ongoing source of funds. They are, right now, funding dumpsters in the American River Parkway to the tune of about $25,000 to $30,000 a year. And when we look at NEXUS issues and 218 considerations, that's about where we end up in terms of when you look at the relationship of the county rate base to this effort.
Rob, Supervisor Serna?
I just want one clarification. I think, Rob, can you speak a little bit about the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund? I know you.
Yes.
About the money and what our top processes are.
Certainly. With the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund, the 1.2 million dollars that we've identified as a source of ongoing funds, that's non-rate revenue, meaning it isn't part of what the regular bimonthly or monthly fee goes towards. This is revenue that's derived from, be it energy sales associated with landfill gas, leasing of solid waste properties, and other non-fee-related activities. That is essentially a discretionary revenue for the board, to, the Board of Supervisors, to allocate based upon needs as you see fit through the budget process. Could that revenue be used to pay for department-related expense? Yes. Could it be used to pay for parkway-related or other program-related expenses? Yes, it could be. So it's exclusively up to a decision of the board.
So just to be crystal clear, this is not proposing a fee increase of any kind to help pay for this?
No, this revenue is outside of the fee calculation. The revenue could be used to offset costs in the future related to that fee, but that's not a decision that's framed at this point, nor has it been used to offset rate impacts in the past.
Just one further clarification, too. Different than maybe a lot of municipalities, that the County of Sacramento, in addition to its non-fee, non-rate revenue, obviously have your curbside and any other services you provide to customers, but you also operate a landfill. We operate a landfill which has tipping fees, and we take in trash and other materials from, not just within county, but even out of county, and it's run as a business operation. But so there are two distinct sets of revenue that don't always correlate. But obviously, if you control the tipping rate, then that, you know, factors back into what we charge ourselves to dispose of trash and waste. But I just want to be clear, because there may be another funding stream we're not aware of, but that's a distinction that's very, very important, so that when we look at curbside pickup for customers in the unincorporated area that we serve, that's not the only source of revenue besides this non-fee, non-rate. There's actually landfill revenue. Some of those have dedicated funding streams and dedicated responsibilities and their bond covenants. But I just want to be clear about that because I know it's gotten pretty mixed up, at least as I read the staff report about, you know, some future rate increase that might be tied to this. And I think to Supervisor Serna's point, to your clarification, Mr. Gill, that's.
I think I just want to be very clear is that we're not suggesting if you do this today, we're going to bring you a rate increase package tomorrow.
Good.
That's not what we're suggesting. Well, we wanted to also answer that you did ask, if we go into some of these funds, what's the impact that has on those funds? Now, all we're illustrating is that there is a give and take on these. By taking this, it does take some of the ability, as Mr. Leonard said, that we could have used that to cushion some future rate increases. But that's down the road. Don't want to suggest in any way that it's something you do today, and we're coming back to you tomorrow on a rate increase.
And we had this very similar conversation at Regional Sanitation District, where we have six or $7 million of non-rate revenue.
Right.
And looked at whether or not to offset potential, you know, rate increases and/or what it might equate to a monthly, you know, bill reduction for a customer versus what it might do from the standpoint of other investments in the community. And so, not dissimilar to that. Supervisor Frost?
I just want to further clarify because my understanding is that the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund is money that covers, you know, those costs that rates and fees don't cover, and it helps actually mitigate increasing rates and fees. And that solid waste is on track to possibly have to raise fees over the next five or 10 years. And that, so by borrowing from that fund, in theory, it could increase and make more frequent the rate and fee increases. It could actually, well, it basically takes from that department's budget, so they have less to work with.
That is correct. I mean, that, your statement, it does take resources away from them.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, actually, if I punch it in for a different question, but relative to Cal Expo, my understanding is that we strove to find any memorialization of what the arrangement is with Cal Expo for this county's provision of services to their portion of the parkway, and we could not really find that. We couldn't track it down. We don't, are we flying blind a bit with an understanding, a formal understanding of what that arrangement is?
Jeff Leatherman, best.
Next on the podium.
Jeff Leatherman, Director of Regional Parks. The relationship with Cal Expo is we used to have a management agreement to manage their portion of the parkway. That agreement has since expired and has not been renewed. Both myself and Rick Pickering have had discussions about that over the past year and a half, and how we get that redrafted and renewed, both between his board and our board.
In concept, Jeff, is that something that would spell out financial responsibility for service delivery?
It hasn't in the past, but it could in the future.
And how many acres are we talking about in terms of?
Give or take. I want to say about 350 acres or so, maybe 400.
Okay, so not a small portion.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to make sure that, as Jeff is still, is that if the board so desires after your decision today or September 6th, the agreement, my understanding, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, was not so much on the financial side, it was more operational. If the desire is for us to introduce that in there, then we can go back to Mr. Pickering and say, would you amend the contract, a new contract coming, have that provision in there?
That's correct.
Okay. And then I don't see in the list of other entities that have some benefit from the parkway UP, the railroad, since they do traverse the parkway. Were they approached at all in the course?
They were approached. They are not included on this list. However, they do have grant money that is potentially available for the same purposes, likely debris removal as it relates to their, the property, approximate to their property that runs through the parkway.
Okay.
What we focused on in this one is more on operational, and Jeff does avail of grant money to keep some of the improvements going.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Supervisor Frost and Supervisor Peter. Okay, Supervisor Frost and Supervisor Peter.
I would like to digress with a couple of questions. The first one relates to the animal control officer, the cost for the animal control officer. If, in going back to the 2016 figures, the pay range, average pay range for animal control officer appears to be around $48,000 to $83,000 a year, but you're saying the ongoing cost is $126.5, and so I'm asking, does that include benefits? Is that the auto? What's included in that $126.5?
That would be a compensation and benefited benefits. That's the full cost of one of those positions is reflected by that $120,000 plus number.
And that's the case with all these positions that we're adding? We're adding basically full-time employees with pension and benefits and all the benefits, basically?
With the Parks debris removal teams, the majority of the staff there is intermittent, which is not a benefited position. It's a seasonal position or a part-time county position, which at the end of the day, for the duration and the services that are provided, is very comparable to what we would pay a contractor. And so, we are looking at intermittent positions with the debris removal team, and then also, to the extent the board wanted to add debris removal teams, intermittent positions, and then also a combination of either current county-owned, or if we need new equipment, we would rent equipment or lease equipment versus purchase equipment for those debris removal teams. That's a level of detail I didn't mention earlier on that detailed slide, but we did look at how we can make utilization of intermittent staff.
So I'm just trying to make sense of the animal control officer. You said three calls per week generally, on the average. So we're going to pay for a full-time, we're proposing to pay a full-time position for three calls a week?
And the straightforward response is, is yes. That's what the cost for that would be.
Supervisor Frost, I think, just to kind of clarify, the question that was asked, just like with the community prosecutor, the question was asked, if we were to augment this team with an animal control officer, show us what the cost will be. And that's what we're showing you is that a full-time employee, salaries and benefits, about $120,000, then I forget the number that we have for the vehicle, and that's what we're reporting back to you is that that's the unit cost for an animal control officer.
Okay. And then I also wanted to ask, on the arrest, on the arrest figures, are the arrests, are we talking, we're talking about people that were arrested on the Parkway, but are they all homeless?
Have Chief Donald come down.
Those arrest numbers are both misdemeanor arrests, which are released with a citation, and felony arrests where they're actually booked into jail. And mixed into those numbers will be non-homeless people that are associated with some of the rafting events and other recreational uses, but I would say that the majority of the arrests we make do deal with homeless.
Thank you.
Supervisor Peters?
Thank you. I wanted to go back to something you said, Mr. Gill, about Cal Expo. It sounded like you were asking for direction from the board and didn't have it yet, that we wanted you to talk to Cal Expo about cost sharing in your negotiations.
Correct. What we currently have is a, if you will, lack for better expressions, an MOU that's expired, which has got more operational, how we're going to work with each other. There's not a financial component in there. And that's what I was asking at the end of the day, if that's something that the board...
I think you'd have a lot of yeses on that. We do want you to ask for that. And the area takes a lot of the services, that's where a lot of the fires are, and that's where a lot of the homeless come off Ethan Way there. It's just, you know, it's a great gathering spot for them. So I'd say a financial contribution is definitely in order.
We will put that in the mix.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, you had direction.
I did. I can leave, right?
If we can get you through the end here.
Yeah, okay. Home stretch.
We've got about 67 speakers and questions, I'm sure.
Okay. Now, first year in ongoing cost and revenue. So if we take that cost for the alternative scenarios that were reviewed previously, and then you take the sources of funds that we just discussed, you could see that there's a funding gap. The upper box on this slide shows that first year. So this includes those one-time costs along with the ongoing costs, and these are in constant dollars. These aren't escalated over time, assuming some rate of inflation. These are our current dollars. You can see that the funding gap is 1.434 million in the $3 million scenario, ranging up to 3.8 million in the $5 million scenario for the first year. That's with all the one-time costs in. This is also 12 months. This isn't a partial year. It's assuming full 12 months. This includes the solid waste offset revenue of 1.2. It also includes the $1 million of Neighborhood Revitalization Fund money. It's assuming we're going to exhaust that fund, that one-time money, in the first year of operation. The lower box then shows where we are in terms of what the ongoing funding gap would be moving ahead. And that ranges from, call it $1.9 million to $3.9 million. And so, that translates then to a number that would have to be considered by the board for alternative funding sources, ultimately at the end of the day focusing on general fund allocation in the budget process. Performance measures, if we do, moving ahead...
I'm sorry, Supervisor Frost, you had a question before?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just have a question. I was under the impression that the neighborhood revitalization was just one pot of money. That's not money that renews year after year. It's not an ongoing funding source.
That's correct.
That's what we said.
So on this first year, funding gap shows, it shows the net cost of 3.6 million minus 1.2 does not equal the funding gap. So, I mean, we're talking about, that was the net cost for year one. So after year one, this is only giving us a snapshot of year one, then?
Yeah, the upper box shows year one, and then the ongoing box down below shows essentially, you won't see a million dollars there from the Neighborhood Revitalization Fund, because it's assuming that it's gone. We've used it. So you could see the Solid Waste Enterprise money of 1.2 million in the ongoing. Up above, in the upper box, you could see Solid Waste Enterprise and Neighborhood Revitalization.
Yeah, I see it now. And so, on the neighborhood revitalization, where will we go if we need tree abatement or we have a community project? One of the supervisors asked for some of the history on requests for those funds, and I know there isn't a terrible, huge amount of money that's taken out of that over time, but where would we go for that money, then? It's generally around $50,000 a year that we use out of this fund, or would you say?
Yeah, about that much. I mean, different sources, primarily we'll look at general fund. If it's something that related to streets, we'll look at transportation. If it's, depending on the source or the nature of the request, we'll look at the different funds. But majority of the time, it'll come back to the general fund for us to find money.
So on top of the funding gap, there would be an extra $50,000 for what was left behind that we don't have, basically? The resource that we don't have anymore?
Yes.
You don't have to answer. That was, sorry, just a comment.
All right, Rob, we've got a couple more slides.
Two more slides.
A thousand more questions, and then we'll get the audience participation. No, I'm kidding, we're going to get there.
The performance measures, and again, these were presented by staff, discussed with the board on July 11th. For any initiative we may take on, for any level of additional funding, we thought, well, how are we going to measure the productivity or the results of what we're doing? And so, we suggest these for consideration as something that we would come back to the board on a periodic basis to say, here's how we're doing. Here's where we were, here's the additional activity or results that we've seen as a result of the resources that have been pushed out. So legal camps engaged, illegal campers connected with services, arrests and debris removal, for example, a lot of the things we've talked about.
Rob, and I know Supervisor Serna wants to weigh in, I would just suggest you may want to use some positive measures as well, which may be a little less, you know, you're not going to qualify with tonnage or something, but if you have seen discouraged use, you know, by, you know, certain users of Parkway and certain segments, and if you see increased usage or increased, whether it's day use and/or participation in certain activities and so forth, there may be other ways to measure this. These are, I say negatives, they're all measures of enforcement and kind of, you know, cleaning up the mess after the fact. I would hope there'd be some ability beyond just kind of anecdotal that we could then tie ourselves to to actually, you know, what will be a visible improvement, maybe on the physical landscape, hopefully some services to folks that are homeless, that, you know, get the services that are needed to get them in a better place. And then also, then measure that by, you know, what's happening there, you know, positive or otherwise, because all of these are measures of actions that we're, you know, going to contemplate what's being put forward.
I appreciate what you're saying. I think that some of the trends on some of these things I'd like to think would be positive, too.
Yeah, right. Okay, Supervisor Serna?
Yeah. So I was going to say the same thing and maybe add a little more detail. I'd like to see a performance measure that is not just about connecting people with services, folks that are suffering homelessness. That's not the objective. The objective is to bring people out of homelessness. So if there's a measure or metric where we can begin to, through, I would presume, active case management, through every aspect of our continuum, understand if it's someone that was once living on the Parkway and avails themselves, perhaps even their family members that are homeless with them, of services that are offered by way of this enhanced effort, to track that progress through, whether it's beginning at the full-service shelter as a point of entry into the continuum, through transitional housing, through permanent supportive housing, through self-sufficiency, maybe through accessing public housing resources at some point. I think that needs to be a very carefully thought-through measure of success to Chair Natoli's point. And then another more general measure would be, how many more folks are using the Parkway for what it's designed to offer? Whether it be hiking, fishing, we just adopted a new mountain bike trail course in this area. How many folks are going to be using that as a measure of bringing back the Parkway to a condition where it's more welcoming of the design recreational purposes that people hope to enjoy? I think that's something we should carefully consider as well.
Certainly. Appreciate that. Final slide is that the board provide us with direction on any level of additional funding and direct the county executive to come back on September 6th with final budget for consideration by the board. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Rob. I'll just ask board members of the other questions of Rob or the staff here. We do have about 60 speakers, and we have some folks with deadlines that we'll need to hear from first. But let me go to board members first. Any other questions about...Supervisor Peters?
No, no, no. I was just changing my screen.
Okay, all right. Anybody else? Okay. All right, very good. Okay. Okay, so with that, anything else, Mr. Gill, before we embark upon hearing from folks? We've got about 60 speakers, so I'm going to put two and a half minutes up, so try to adhere to that. But before we get started, I know we have Assembly Member Kevin McCarty who's here and has a scheduled, I believe, vote back at the Capitol at 4:00, so we'll try to get you back in time to cast that important vote. And he'll be followed by the school board member, Jay Hanson, Sex City Unified School, Jay's here as well. So Kevin, thanks for joining us.
Thank you, and I enjoyed the conversation, local government one-on-one in action, so I appreciated it. And I just stated right there that I know this is not a black and white issue. It's certainly a lot of gray, and there's no easy answers, easy solutions, so I appreciate the deliberation. And I want to start off by supporting efforts to improve our Parkway. Certainly applaud Supervisor Serna for bringing this, agendaing this today, but more importantly to the whole board for looking at this issue. It's not all of your districts, but it's an important jewel for Sacramento. I know it's one of the best things we have in our community. Eight million people come here every year, and we all want a vibrant and active Parkway. And so, I wanted to really address three things. First is, I came here two years ago to ask for your help to improve the Parkway. And with your help, we sponsored legislation. The county was the lead sponsor of legislation of a law that was signed by the governor to create a state conservancy to bring more resources to this American River Parkway. The bill was signed into law. I'm pleased to report this past budget year, we were able to receive a million-dollar allocation to help launch this Parkway infrastructure improvement, focusing on public access, habitat preservation, and just general improvements to the Parkway led by a body that two of you will serve on. Also want to report that in the next couple of days, we're going to be voting on a park and water bond, and right now, the park and water bond has a $20 million earmark for the Parkway. So it's not a done deal, still have to vote on it, has to go to the voters in 2018 statewide, but right now, we have a $20 million line item in that measure, in large part because we said that if we ever had a conservancy, we'd be in line to get resources like a park and water bond. And I'm here to ask that you seriously consider focusing on additional ongoing money to focus on safety and cleanliness of the Parkway, because it's really, these things work hand-in-hand. If I help and get, you know, tens of millions of dollars for the Parkway, we don't have the resources to keep it clean and safe. It really is for naught. Secondly, I want to talk about just the Parkway in general. I read a few weeks ago where Supervisor Serna talked about him riding his bike as a kid to the Parkway. Well, so did I. I grew up, as I've talked to Susan over the years, out in her district in Carmichael, and I had a great time experiencing the Parkway. But thinking now about it, there really are two Parkways. There's a Parkway from Watt Avenue-ish, Guy West going towards Folsom, and the other Parkway, because kids in Carmichael and the other areas, Art and Arcade, have a very different experience is from kids in South Natomas, Del Paso Heights, Dos Rios. Families don't feel safe necessarily visiting that Parkway, and that just is a total wrong, and it's inequity, and I think that we ought to go about bringing about improvements on the Parkway to make sure that's enjoyed by all families. So losing the Parkway, losing a part of it, really loses the whole piece of it. And so that's why, I realize it's not, again, a black and white issue, but whatever we can do to help bring resources, to have ongoing support and a one-time support to improve public access, habitat preservation, and so forth, would be great for all of us in this community. The third thing really is the elephant in the room, and that's what happens to the people on the Parkway. And it's a reality. There are individuals that are homeless, that consider this part of their home for wrong or right reasons. And we all need to work on this together. I know the county has stepped up recently to expand resources for the triage center and other efforts to improve service. I know the city, my old city council, I served on that body for 10 years, never spent a dime for homeless services in the last three years. Very impressive what they're doing is putting city resources, because I know we're all in this together. And so, we're going to be working with the city and the county to try to draw down the $2 billion from the No Place Like Home monies to help homeless with mental illness get housed. And then lastly, it's the top issue on our agenda at the Capitol for the next four weeks. We have multiple measures on housing, one of which is another bond. There's going to be two bonds in the ballot in 2018, one park bond, one housing bond. And this housing bond has anywhere between $3 to $5 billion in it, tentatively, for things like affordable housing, homelessness, and services. So I think that we are working to make sure that we don't just push here and realize that there is an impact over here. So, again, I hope that we can work together to restore and protect our Parkway for this generation, the generations to come. I appreciate your deliberation, and thank you for tackling this topic. Thanks.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you for your leadership as well. Thanks, Kevin.
Any questions on state efforts?
How's it going over at the Capitol today?
Busy.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Okay, thank you, Senator McCarty. Okay, Board Member Hanson?
Good afternoon, Jay.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Supervisors. My name is Jay Hanson. I'm the president of the Sacramento School Board. Additionally, I'm the governor's appointee on the California Health Facilities Financing Authority, and we do a lot of work with county organizations supporting mental health. And the No Place Like Home money is also going to be run through our financing authority. So there's a lot of opportunities to support that your work that you're doing here as supervisors. And I'm speaking in support of this initiative. I'm a believer that however and whenever local governments can work together, we really have an obligation to do so. You know, the 47,000 children that are in our school district and the tens of thousands of students and children in our neighboring districts rely on all the outdoor opportunities to be able to play, exercise, and explore. And it's a tough fact that right now, the Sacramento Parkway is off limits to those children. No parent or guardian will let their children use this amazing resource. The initiative that's in front of you is a big step to reopening the Parkway for all of our children. As a fellow government representative, I understand the difficulty in making tough budget decisions, but likewise, your budget decisions are a reflection of your priorities and who you serve. So on behalf of the tens of thousands of students in my district, I hope you will vote yes and restore the Parkway once again as a place where children can play, exercise, and explore. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Thanks, Jay.
Okay, well, once again, we thank Assembly Member McCarty and School Board Member Hanson for being here with us and speaking. And so I'm going to go into a stack of about 60 speakers, and I'll call about three or four at a time. Many of you have been here, so you know the drill. So be prepared to come up so we can keep things moving. I'm going to put two and a half minutes on the clock, and I see Supervisor Serna had a comment before I...
I just wanted to let the chair know, we do have another school board member from a different district here. I didn't know if she wanted to speak or not, but Ramon Landeras is also here.
Oh, okay, very good. I didn't have a speakership. Come on up. We walked me up, sir. He got it just in time, otherwise I was going to make three people mad when I called him.
I'm here also to support the Parkway initiative. As you know, we also have to make decisions, budget decisions, but I'm a trustee member for Twin Rivers School Board, 35,000 students, and I represent the Del Paso Heights and North Highlands. And that is a very important Parkway that our families do not have access to. So I'm here to support that, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for being here. Anybody else that I missed?
I'm scanning.
Okay, all right. Oliver Vales has signed up, so, okay. With that, then, we'll start with Roland Brady, followed by Stephen Green, followed by Mark Levets.
Thank you very much. My name's Roland Brady. I'm a consulting engineering geologist, and I've been working on the Parkway cleanups for a number of years. And I'm not here to opine on the politically charged homeless issue. I'm sure that's a relief for you. But my interest is in the pending and inevitable, but entirely preventable environmental travesty that's about to happen along the banks of Arcade Creek, Steelhead Creek, the American River, and Dry Creek, when the rains finally come and hundreds of tons of debris and hazardous waste wash down into the American River and into the Sacramento River. As soon as the rains return and the water levels rise, this will happen into state-controlled and federal-controlled waterways. This is not a matter of aesthetics. It's ecological contamination. There's a clear and present hazard to public health and safety because of all the debris along these waterways. If business or industry did this, they would be fined or incarcerated, but yet accumulates day after day because of our failure to clean it up. I've consulted with environmental legal counsel, and their opinion is, if the county allows this to happen, if they don't clean up this debris before the rains come, it will be one of the largest hazardous waste discharges of the year, and the county and the city will be involved in this. It will make them potentially liable to class action suits and state enforcement actions. Along with the obvious debris, there are five-gallon buckets of human waste, syringes by the hundreds, cans of pressurized paint and gas, gasoline, motor oil, soap detergent, and tons of plastic bags and tarps. I've contacted the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, the EPA, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, the Department of Toxic Substance Control, DWR, and the Regional Water Quality Control Board. They're all aware of this. So the fact is, we've got to clean this up despite whatever issues and work is being done to cure and control the homeless issue. It has to be cleaned up before the rains come. I'll volunteer personally to help with every crew you put together, but we need to get this cleaned up in the next few months, or it will end up in the river. Thank you.
Thank you, Roland. Stephen? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Stephen Green, Save the American River Association, and I want to thank Assembly Member McCarty for the fine work he's done in creating the conservancy, and particularly for getting $20 million into legislation that is going forward. That's a wonderful thing to have happened here. We definitely support Supervisor Serna's initiative at the $5 million level, but we recognize that that is just one piece of what should be a much bigger issue, and that is regional response to provide services and shelter for our homeless people. I would like to suggest Supervisor, or Supervisor Holy, that perhaps you and Mayor Steinberg could convene a summit of elected leaders in our county who could discuss how you could pool resources and work together in a concerted effort to help our homeless populations. I hope that you saw a letter to the editor in the Sacramento Bee this morning from a man in Reno named David Fenimore. He said, "For years, once Reno turns cold, we come to Sacramento with bicycles for a long weekend and ride the American River Parkway. We won't this year. The Parkway sounds too dangerous." You know, this fabulous asset we have is at great risk today, and you just heard about the potential for huge pollution once the rain starts. And we hope that we can have programs going forward to deal with this. And for those of us who live on the Parkway, for the problems of the homeless people who are in our neighborhoods on a daily basis, they're constantly going through my neighborhood to a convenience store, and we have crime problems that we never had until the last few years when homeless people were there. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephen. Okay, next, we have Mark Levets, followed by Karen Humphrey, followed by Mary Ellen Mueller. Mark Levets? Did Mark have to leave? Okay, I'll set that aside. So Karen Humphrey? Karen? And then Karen's followed by Mary Ellen Mueller, and then Tim Wall. Good afternoon, Karen.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Thank you. I'm Karen Humphrey of Sacramento, a member of St. Mark's United Methodist Church and Sacramento Act. Most of the advocates you frequently see are preparing for a large meeting at St. Mark's tonight, so they were unable to be here. And we look forward to Chair Natoli joining us at that meeting. I'm also former mayor of Fresno and a strong believer in River Parkways. I helped create the San Joaquin River Parkway in the 1980s and 90s. It was modeled directly on the American River Parkway. I share the view that the American River Parkway is a jewel to be treasured and protected. But you must not impose massive police action to force homeless people off the Parkway before you figure out where they will go. This is an issue with almost any effort that you have to move homeless people away from where they need not be. Without a strategy to dramatically expand temporary and permanent housing, and expansion of mental health, substance abuse, and other services, you just move the problem around and you waste precious resources, and you don't serve the human needs of the people who are experiencing homelessness. My issue with today's discussion is that it's out of context. We appreciate the resources the board has used to address homelessness. We appreciate that Supervisor Serna wants to make sure that some of the homeless options and services are in place before starting this program. But in the long run, you have no plan to assure the resources will achieve the results you want. You have no fixed goals, measurable outcomes, or identified ways to leverage resources across jurisdictional boundaries to solve the problem. If homelessness continues to grow, then you need a plan even more. And I really reflect Mr. Green's comments, that you need a regional comprehensive collaborative effort. I sympathize with the people concerned about the Parkway, but I also sympathize with the estimated 2,000 unsheltered people wandering homeless in Fresno County and Sacramento County, beg your pardon, and many more who are in imminent danger of falling into homelessness. Reactive, isolated actions will not end homelessness. St. Mark's and Sacramento Act continue to call on you to commit to develop a comprehensive, collaborative, regional plan with all the stakeholders involved to actually end homelessness in all its aspects by a date certain. The plan is not a solution in itself, but without it, you won't get to a solution. Addressing the Parkway issue is definitely something the plan should address and it can address, but it is far from the only thing. It really should not take more than a few months to craft a plan, and you don't have to do nothing in the meantime. Some current efforts are clearly helpful right now, but if you continue to try to solve this complicated and expanding problem of homelessness without a clear plan for how you'll get there, you will not succeed. It's the old cliche, failure to plan means planning to fail. We urge you to make development of this plan a keystone for any further steps you take to address homelessness. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jay. Okay, next, Mary Ellen, then Tim Wall, and then Wayne Watts.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity. I'm just here representing myself as a resident of Carmichael, longtime resident, over 20 years. I support this initiative, and I believe that it's a viable solution for the American River Parkway in terms of the environmental effects that are being suffered by pollution and human waste, et cetera. And I believe that this plan presents a doable solution, I believe, at least for the Parkway. I am not speaking about the homeless situation. I agree with a lot of comments that have said that it's a serious, difficult problem, and providing shelter is definitely important for those people, but I would rather see focus on outcomes, not just getting them into shelters. I would like to see jobs provided, some long-term plan for these people. But back to the environment, I would also like to see some performance measures in terms of water quality and habitat restoration. I use the Parkway for all kinds of recreation, biking, fishing, and I recognize that it brings a lot of economic development to our community, whether it's recreation dollars spent or dollars spent at fishing and bicycle shops, et cetera. So I urge you to support this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ellen. Okay. Next, I have Tim Wall. Tim? And then Wayne Watts, and then William Dawson.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you. I'm a relatively newcomer to Sacramento, having only lived here a year and a half. However, my whole life, I've lived within 60 miles of Sacramento, and for many years, my wife and I biked on the pathway here. After moving here, all the neighbors said, "You can't do that anymore. It's not safe." And even though we do, we see what's going on out there. Every day, I drive by and see piles and piles of garbage that has been cleaned and tried to be recycled. You know, you'd have to be an ogre not to feel compassion for all these people, but there's a very disparate enforcement of rules and regulations. If I walk down the street enjoying an adult beverage, I'm arrested. What happens in Caesar Chavez Park or on the Parkway with a person like this? You know, a few years ago, there was a vulgar bumper sticker, but in my neighborhood, it's a reality. Excrement exists. And where I live, it exists all too much. Please understand that I'm not against homeless people, and they do have problems, but there's been a lot of studies done as to why they're there. And the people that speak for a plan are correct. There has to be a plan. As an anecdotal exercise, on Monday afternoon, there's a Sacramento-based talk show host who had it run in with a homeless person in Davis. And he's had a lot to say about this. You might look up and see what that was all about. But the bottom line is, it's a philosophical problem. If we philosophize that they're innocent victims, that's partly true, but we're innocent victims in that we're discriminated against as taxpayers and people who work. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, Wayne Watts, followed by William Dawson, followed by Helen O'Connell. Good afternoon, Wayne.
My name is Wayne Watts. I've been a resident of Sacramento County since 1974, when the Air Force transferred me here. I found the Parkway in the mid-'80s, and I fell in love with it. As a transplant in country boy, this is a resource that no other city has. It's a jewel that if we lose it, we're never going to get it back. To be able to enjoy a bit of the country in the middle of the city is something that no city in California can match Sacramento. The American River Parkway is unique, and it is truly in danger. I've been a cleanup volunteer for 30 years. I've seen the dirty side of the issues, literally. Going into camps, they would make you gag from the stuff that's left in these camps. When you see a camp that's been abandoned for 60 days in a hot summer sun, and you can smell it before you see it, you have issues. I love, I've got a big family. I love to take my family to the Parkway. I've raised a generation of daughters and sons. I'm raising a generation of granddaughters and grandsons, in fact, a great-granddaughter. We love the Parkway. But it's not the point now, when I take my son fishing, we have to use a code word, penguin, so that he can tell me he's found something like a hypodermic needle that I have to clean up before he can go fishing and can use the Parkway. And that's not just once. That's almost every time I go. I go for a lunch walk, do a cleanup, and I have to bring three or four garbage bags with me. This is in the Cal Expo area, right around the six-mile mark, seven-mile mark, by there. And out of those four bags, I'll use every one of those, and sometimes more. Sometimes I have to dump them. This is all from, it's repeat. You know, a camp gets cleaned up, it stays clean for a week, then it's occupied again. Then it takes a month to get that person out, cleaned up, and it just is a revolving, revolving, revolving. And it takes away our use of the Parkway. And it's just certain people that are doing it. I mean, I pity the homeless. I know we need to help them. But there are certain campers, illegal campers, that are doing this not because they have to, but because they want to, and they violently resist services offered to them.
Wayne, I'll need you to wrap up, please.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Wayne. Okay, William Dawson, and then Helen O'Connell, and then Maureen Dixon. Good afternoon, William.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board of supervisors. I'm William Dawson. I'm a resident of Carmichael since 1967, and I've used the Parkway along with my family, my wife, my daughters. We've ridden the length of the Parkway hundreds of times. I'm also the leader of a crew that, once a month, cleans up an adopted mile of the Parkway in the area that this gentleman just mentioned, between Cal Expo and the campus commons golf course. We've donated hundreds and hundreds of hours, collected thousands and thousands of pounds of trash, and we're pleased that we're able to do it, but sorry that we have to. I support full funding of the measure that's been discussed today at the $5 million level. I think, you know, out of sight, out of mind, not in my backyard, you know, that's all okay, but the Parkway is not good for that. Doing nothing about this issue is not acceptable. In spite of all the current efforts, the Parkway de facto is increasingly a relatively safe haven for homeless people. And as a result, parts of the Parkway have been and increasingly are being destroyed and are unsafe for the general public. I am fully aware of the much broader... I am fully aware of the much broader and deeper problems that result in that. Indeed, there's a quote from Desmond Tutu that I think is appropriate. There comes a point where we need to stop just pulling people out of the river. We need to go upstream and find out why they're falling in. And that's where all of these other related services that need your attention and need the attention of state, county, city, and other groups to address why these people are having these problems and do the best that we can to solve them. So I urge you to continue to take the problem head-on, work aggressively with other stakeholders to solve it, and this initiative is a very good first step.
Okay, thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
Do you need a handheld? Helen, would you like a handheld mic? Or is that okay?
I need a mic. Thank you. My name is Helen O'Connell, and I believe that your initiative has a lot of different aspects to it that are very good. However, I think the policing issue is a little top-heavy, and I think if we provide amenities like restrooms and water fountains and dumpsters that are placed strategically along the Parkway, that people will inevitably use those amenities to keep their own place clean, because nobody wants to live in a dumpster. And everybody that is on the Parkway does not necessarily want to destroy the beauty that the Parkway shows us. So I think that if you penalize people for living there when there's no other place for them, that's a travesty, and I think you should consider giving them more opportunities to become employed, to find short-term and long-term housing. A housing issue is gravely understated right now. We've got too many people wanting to live in a home and not enough homes for the people that need them, and I think that should be your focus, not necessarily the penalization of camping. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Okay, thank you, Helen. Next is Maureen Dixon, followed by Barbara Leary, followed by Harold Thomas.
Hello, my name is Maureen Dixon. I'm a 19-year volunteer with Girl Scouts Heart of Central California, and I volunteer in the Fair Oaks and Gold River area. I lead our outdoor education, and as part of that, I take girls on hikes in the American River Parkway about four times a year. Every time that I go out, I have to pre-hike the hike to assess dangers, no matter where we go. In general, one of the major issues I have going out into the Parkway is, now that I'm starting to train young women how to plan these hikes, when I pre-hike it, I normally would be looking for things like, "Oh, there's a drop-off here," or "How am I going to keep my five-year-olds on the trail?" But there are places on the Parkway where I'm looking for, "Oh, are there hypodermic needles?" I will not take the girls closer to downtown than the Guy West Bridge. It's just the opportunities for negative interactions are just too high, and frankly, I can't get my volunteers to go any further than that. We have a jewel here, and the Girl Scout Institute talks in their report, some more is in more, about how being out in the outdoors for young people increases their ability to have creative reasoning and all of those things that we are encouraged to try and teach our young people. And if the facilities are not available to them, it is a problem. Also, as a cyclist, I cycle the Parkway two to three times a week, and again, I won't go past the Guy West Bridge because I just don't know what I'm going to run into, and I've run into enough anecdotal stories from other cyclists that I'm like, you know, it's just not worth the trouble. That means I'm not coming into downtown to go to lunch and spend my money there. It means that I'm, you know, not exploring those areas to take my girls to. So I encourage you to do this. At the same time, I have great sympathy for our problems with our homeless population, and I encourage you to try and find a plan to help them achieve homes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maureen. Okay. Okay, next is Barbara Leary. Barbara? And then Harold Thomas? I don't know, maybe Barbara left. I'll call him on here later. Harold Thomas, then followed by Lorraine Best.
Thank you very much. My name's Harold Thomas. I've been a resident of Sacramento City for 35 years. I was the public prosecutor, your equivalent of your community prosecutor, in Butte County for 16 years. I did work on the Feather River, similar to what you're talking about doing. And enforcement is complicated. It's a system, it's like a pipeline. You can increase the citations, and that gets you some attention, but the pipeline at the court has to be equal to the pipeline at the citation level. There has to be, at the sheriff's office, there has to be beds for misdemeanors. And in fact, today, I don't think we incarcerate any misdemeanors of any type, whether they be batters or misdemeanor camping. So we have to have beds, and then we have to have a swap program at the sheriff's office, which means you have to put people to work, because this is not a population of people that have any money, they wouldn't be there. They don't, they're used to basically ignoring citations. Infractions are of no consequence. Misdemeanors are generally of no consequence when you've got five or 10. Bench warrants aren't issued very much, and again, that's part of the court discussion. We need to be meeting with the PJ, saying, "Why are we not issuing bench warrants on a regular basis for this group? Because they're not showing up, the FTAs are legion." And that system has to be organized all the way down the line. It's important what you're doing, I support exactly what you're doing. We support what you're doing. We also would like that discussion with the SO, with the sheriff's office, so that there are sanctions when people do not use the services. And that's what the community prosecutor does. It imposes the threat or actual sanction so that the person with services being offered will go there. And that incentive or disincentive, whatever you want to call it, is what moves people from stasis to action, and so we need to do more of that. So it's a systemic problem. I offer my time as a volunteer. I'm retired. Thank you.
Thanks, Harold. I hope somebody's getting down these offers of volunteer efforts, so we've got a couple. So let's make sure we get the good...
Diana's in the audience.
Thanks, Harold. Okay, Lorraine.
Yes, I live in Elk Grove, and I used to live along the American River on what used to be, it was, it's soil-borne farm now, and I have a daughter and grandchildren that live on the American River now, so I still visit it. But I'm an equestrian, and I see things from the back of a horse. I spent three and a half hours, my husband and I, yesterday, riding our horses on the American River Parkway, from Riverbend Park all the way to the Sunrise staging area and back again, which is six miles of the Parkway. And in those six miles, it was absolute heaven. I have to say, it was heaven. The water was sparkling, people were swimming, there were people fishing, there were people walking their dogs, there were numerous bicycle riders, small children in parks along the way having fun, people picnicking, people rafting, I mean, you name it, it was going on. The strippers are running, I guess. But I'm sad to say that from now on, from Wad Avenue to Discovery Park is a no-go zone for horseback riding or a lot of other activities from what I'm hearing tonight. But we've had people intoxicated come out of the bushes and charge our horses with their pit bulls. We've had them actually grab the reins and try to take the horse over. It's a very scary, very scary situation. We've had times when we have ridden that we've reported the encampments, because they do go, the horse trails do diverge from the bike trail. On a lot of the Parkway, they go way off into the boondocks and up and around, and they're not really visible from the bike trail or even from the river. And we have seen the homeless encampments and the trash, and we, Rancho Cordova is excellent when we report it. We circle it on our map, and we give it to the person at the kiosk on our way out, and the next time we ride that trail, it's done, it's cleaned up. They do an excellent job. But any other thing that you can do that can bring the Parkway back to the jewel that it once was, would, I'm for the initiative. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Okay, next Mary Alice Keaton, Patty Kleinconnect, and Kathy Kainer.
Good afternoon, I'm Mary Alice Keaton. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board today.
Thank you.
And also, thank you for the educational newsletter highlighting the county's commitment to homeless initiatives. It was very informative. I'm here today representing my running and walking groups who asked me to speak. We have met with Supervisor Peters to discuss our concerns about the American River Parkway homeless issue, the rise of serious incidents along the corridor, and the impacts to the area attributed to illegal camping. As homeowners living adjacent to the Parkway, we are asking you to support the increase of $5 million a year to hire additional employees to address this issue. Daily, we face the consequences of the county's failure to enforce these laws that prevent camping in our Parkway, public urination, panhandling, and dumping of trash. If you need anecdotal cases to support the problems we personally face, here are just a few that have happened in the last six months. We have run the same course at 6:00 AM or 9:00 AM from Estates Drive across the Arden Footbridge to Rancho Cordova and back for the last 20 years. This area was once pristine, and now it's unsafe for us to run without carrying pepper spray or taking our dogs with us for added safety and security. Daily, we see encampments and residual trash dumped by the illegal campers. We've had a man on a bike carrying a machete knife approach us as he searched for his companions who he believes stole his dogs. Weekly, we see campers who, in our opinion, have come to view this property as their own. Arden Way from Fair Oaks Boulevard to the Parkway has now become a corridor for homeless to make their way on a daily basis. We already pay additional funds for increased sheriff patrols in our neighborhoods. We are asking you, as our representative, to increase the county's funding for the American River Parkway to help address these pressing issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Alice. Okay, Patty, Kathy Kainer, and Andre Gaya, I think, or Gaya?
Good afternoon, Sharon Natale. Patty Kleinconnect with the River District. The River District represents approximately 200 property owners and 300 businesses just north of downtown. Our northern boundary is along the American River Parkway, consists of three miles. We all know that the American River Parkway is considered our top regional asset and a top visitor attraction. Yesterday, you heard a presentation that outlined the significant impact the arts have on our local economy. I'm sure that our natural assets would have similar contributions. We may need to make sure resources are available for safety and maintenance to assure we can take advantage of the recreational, cultural, and economic benefits of the American River Parkway. This shouldn't be a homeless enforcement discussion only. It should be a discussion about maintaining the region's top asset in a manner that it can be utilized by all of its citizens safely. I hear frequently from businesses about how they are impacted, and to share a message I received in April, a business located right on the Parkway emailed me that many businesses in their building were moving out. They were the last remaining business, and they didn't know how long they'd stay. As a district with three miles on the Parkway and a large concentration of homeless and homeless services, we want to be proud of this natural asset and to be able to use it to attract residents and business to the area. And to do that, it needs to be clean and safe. Maintaining the American River Parkway and addressing homeless shouldn't be an either-or question. We need both. The city and the county are making strides with homeless. We need to be sure we engage the entire region in these solutions. And let's now address the Parkway and support this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Okay, Kathy, then Andre, and then Michelle Steve and Sheila Torres.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I live in Midtown, not far from Sutter's Landing Park and the North American Bike Trail entrance, near the Blue Diamond Factory. I ride the American River Bike Trail three times a week to photograph wildlife. During the summer months, I avoid Sutter's Landing Park as there are too many unleashed dogs and some illegal campers on the walking trails. I do not feel safe. As the dog owners feel, it is all right to unleash their dogs to run through the bike trail or the walking trail and nearly knock people down. I can tell you, last year in July, we had, Friends of the Riverbank had a dragonfly/damsel fly event. There was a four-year-old girl in the group, and three dogs came running through the walking trail, nearly knocked me down and nearly knocked her down. She was bending over looking at a damsel fly. We saw the owners coming, we asked them to please put their dogs on a leash. They used colorful metaphors toward us and walked away. I would like to use the walking trails, off the bike trail, where the horses go, where people hike. I can't do that. I know that there are areas out there where I can photograph wildlife because they're there, but I run into the same problem. Loose dogs who are protecting their owners, the illegal campers, they're everywhere. Loose dogs are everywhere on the bike trail, off the bike trail, and on the walking trails and the horse trails. I would encourage you to hire animal control officers to educate not only the dog owners who are homeless, but those who walk the Parkway, who decide it is fun for their dogs to be let off their leashes so that they can chase after squirrels, chase after turkeys, and nearly run over people on bicycles. I would like to see stiffer fines levied against these owners, because it is a real problem everywhere. Because of the recent violent events on the Parkway, I would like to see more park rangers patrolling not only the walking trails, but also the bike trail. Recently, I rode past a very angry man who had just thrown a rock at a young man riding his bike on the trail. The rock missed a man, but I had to hear the subsequent yelling and cussing from this man.
Kathy, I need you to wrap up.
Yeah, I and so many other law-abiding citizens want to feel safe on the Parkway. Please give careful thought and consideration to our requests for more park rangers and to hire animal control officers. Thank you.
Good, thank you, Kathy. Okay, this is Andre, Andre, and then followed by Michelle, Sheila, and then Paulo Lamazi.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Gentlemen, council members, my name's Andre Gaya. I'm a homeowner and a small businessman in the city, and I put against on my application with the caveat. I have here the county illegal camping parkways, Sacramento County Code 99.36, City of Sacramento Enforcement 12052030, and I go back to 2008, same thing, 2002, nothing has been done. It's gotten worse. So I don't know what the county or the city or anybody else is doing. Everything I've heard here is for nothing. You're not going to solve any problems here. The way to, the solution is to rehabilitate the people on the street. You rehabilitate them. I did the, I've done the homeless count, when I did it, 62% of the homeless were drug, they're substance abusers, 62%, and about 20% above that are the result, and they're considered mental, but the result of illegal drugs. We have not only marijuana, they walk by my house and there's a stream of smoke going out of them every time. It has nothing to do, we have black tar heroin. You think you got a problem? And it's, they're all over the place. It's rehabilitation, and there's one way to do it. It's very simple. You take and you have a military-style work release boot camp, okay? And you can take the wounded warriors, and they could supervise it. They get up at 6:00 in the morning, they run them for two miles, they have breakfast, they go out, and they clean up the parkway. They're the ones that did it. They clean it up, all right? You can give them brutes, they can clean the street, they can wash the walls down. Patty Klein Connects. I call her up, I say, Patty, I got graffiti on my building. They come over the next day. Now, I call up and the city says, well, I'm responsible, and if I don't take it off there, I'm going to get fined. Now, ho, that's terrific, huh? Believe me, the only way to do it is to rehabilitate these people, and it can be done. The city used to have a program called WIT, and it was work release. They took them there, $24. They went to work and they came home, and they better be there. And those people were rehabilitated because I know some of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Andre. Appreciate it. Okay. Michelle and Sheila, I guess, Michelle, you're going to do some introducing, and then Sheila will, she's all reset.
Hi, Supervisors. Thank you for this hearing. Thank you, Supervisor Serna, for bringing it forward. I'm here representing St. John's, which operates the largest program in the county for homeless women and children. We serve up to 270 a day now. And I brought with me a client, Sheila, and she keeps telling me she's nervous, but she's, has no reason to be nervous.
No reason to be nervous.
Who's going to tell her story about moving off of the river after living there for almost five years and now is working and about to move into her own place, so.
Yeah, I was a homeless person, and I was afraid of the homeless people. It's really, really scary living on the river. It had to take, somebody setting fire to my camp that killed my dog, and this woman said something about dogs being off the leash. Well, every time I took JJ with me, he was always on a leash, and if I left my camp, I would tie him up, and I would make sure he couldn't get loose. Well, I made sure he couldn't get loose, and he got caught in the fire, and he died. And I just said enough was enough because I didn't want to die, and the homeless people, they're so mean. I was scared. I was afraid. I had nowhere to go, and I found the river, and I would find places to hide real deep in the paths, away from the bike trails and away from people. And it was just getting so scared, and I just had to leave. I just had to leave, and they, on the river, it was July 29th of 2016, 15, there was a fire right behind Cal Expo, and that was the worst day of my life. That was the worst day of my life. I had experience with the sheep that they grazed on the river, and God answered my prayer through sheep. Anyway, long story short, I got help.
There's something biblical about that.
I detox, I went down to Paraway and got an assessment to get myself clean and sober. I'm 18 months clean and sober today. I have a job. I love my life. And I'm all for what you guys are trying to do to clean up, because you know what? I don't even feel safe going back there, you know? There's a lot of people that need help. I got help. Enough was enough, and St. John's saved my life. I love my life today. I didn't know I could love life being sober, and I do. And I have a lot to thank Michelle at St. John's program for real change. It is real change because my life changed.
That's great.
And I love my life today, and I have my family back in my life. And I meant to tell you, I put a down payment deposit on an apartment yesterday. I got accepted. They're just doing a credit check, and I took care of all my warrants, which I had citations from the rangers on the river. I'm just so excited. I just, I took, the only thing hanging over my head is a cable bill, which wasn't even mine. But, yeah, thank you, Michelle, and thank you for listening to my story.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. So again, St. John's serves up to 270 women and children a day, and I brought Sheila because I just wanted to illustrate that people can move through the system and up and out of the system as she's done, but we need to provide multiple pathways as a county, as a region, as a system. We recently opened a new facility for 90 more women and children daily, which translates to about 450 annually. And it was propelled by a waitlist that we had sustained over the last several years of about 250 to 350 women and children every single day. I was raising money for this expansion, and someone said to me he wouldn't support it because we didn't have a plan to get rid of the entire waitlist. And what I said to him is, that's the, it's analogous to your tire goes flat and you slash the other three tires. I mean, we got to do something. And at St. John's, we have a saying, probably Sheila could say it for me, when you're facing in the right direction, all you need to do is walk. And I would say this plan may not be perfect. I don't know, I'm not an expert at this, but it's facing in the right direction, and we need to start walking. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, Paula Lamazi. Paula, yes, Paula. While Paula's coming forward, I had called earlier Barbara Leary and Mark Levett, so if they returned or rather, I'll call them next. If not, then following Paula is Diana Pageto.
Hi.
Hi, Paula.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. I was homeless in the, well, let me first start that. I've always opposed, and I probably always will oppose, any laws against being homeless because it's like having a law against a person that's poor or people experiencing poverty. So I'm really against that. And, but I think there is probably other ways to deal with the parkway. In the, in the early 2000s, I'm with Sacramento Homeless Organizing Committee, in the early 2000s, we had a river cleanup project with homeless people that lived outdoors, and we adopted a mile, and we had great support by the rangers. We had relationships with the rangers that would give us bags, we'd fill them up, they'd take them. And I think, I think homeless people can be more helpful than we might think. I don't know if there's enough time to develop relationships out there, but I think they could be very helpful. But also, people could use a place to live, and I'm glad that there's some work towards that, to providing that shelter. Sounds great because it seems low barrier, and I think that's great. But I think we could start earlier than 2018 and, you know, find some low, some areas where, are not as important as other areas that you can tell people, why don't you stay here because we have dumpster here, we have toilets, we have, you know, some, just the areas where people can be safe and stay where there is some services where they don't have, they won't pollute, so.
Good. Thanks, Paula. Thanks for your work over the years as well, so. Okay. Did Barbara Leary or Mark Levett come back? You did one of them? All right. Then next is Diana Pageto, followed by Ben Avi, followed by Robert Copeland. All right, Diana.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Diana Pageto, and I'm the Executive Director of the American River Parkway Foundation. You know, I'm here today because, one, we are thrilled from the Parkway Foundation that there's even discussion about additional resources being put towards the parkway. The parkway itself is a natural resource. It does not have a voice. And what you've heard here today, and what I've heard here today, is a lot of voices from people that are active users. But if you were to actually ask the parkway, what's going on with you, it would say, I'm being destroyed. The soil contaminants that is occurring, the first speaker today, what he said is very, very true. The soil is contaminated. When you have human feces that sits in the soil, and you have dog feces, you have trash, it is going to become a health epidemic throughout this region. And I don't think anyone in this region wants to see a health epidemic. Not only is the parkway being utilized by illegal campers, there's also power companies that have miles and miles of power lines that run through, they have easements on the parkway. In the last three years, there have been numerous fires on the parkway. Those power lines, when they get corroded with black soot, that turns power off. There are a number of businesses within the Cal Expo area, as well as the lower parkway, that have had to close down because they have lost power. So it is also an economic issue because when power companies lose power, those power companies are also fined by FERC. So for them to be fined, they don't want to be fined. So they're concerned as well, and as Jeff mentioned, or as Rob mentioned, there is potential funding from them because they want to ensure that their power stays on for all residents, whether it's PG&E, smud, or WAPA. At this time, the funding that's being discussed, there's been a lot of talk about rangers. Rangers are important. But from the Parkway Foundation's perspective, maintenance workers, whether they're seasonal, are just as important because they're the ones that are out there removing the tons and tons of trash. I can say from the Parkway Foundation, and our numbers are nowhere near the county's numbers, so far this year, we have picked up over 60,000 tons of trash. And that is through volunteers that believe so much in the parkway that they are out there picking up trash, human feces and needles. In one cleanup we did, we picked up 115 needles, 115 needles within three hours. That is, here again, a health issue. I invite all of you here in this room, listening, to come out on September 16th to take part in the Great American River Cleanup. We have 2,000 volunteers, 23 locations up and down the parkway. Come see for yourself what it's like to clean up the parkway and see what the degradation is. Thank you.
Thanks. Diana? Diana? I just want to get clarification. I think you may have mixed your tons and your pounds up because you said 60,000 tons or 60...
60,000 pounds, sorry.
Okay, good.
But, you know...
Still a lot.
Perhaps, perhaps the county could say just as much.
Okay. Thanks, Diana. Okay. Ben?
Chair Natoli, Supervisors, I'll actually continue the point of clarification that you just raised. Sacramento steps forward, hasn't taken a position on this proposal, but we did want to clarify some information that has been shared. So first off, I'll say that we have a very strong relationship with the District Attorney's Community Prosecutor, the Sheriff's Hot Team. We work in partnership with them and coordinate with them, and it's very successful. We bring different techniques and styles to the relationship, all with the goal of helping people. In the end, it is successful because you need an alternative to enforcement if you're going to be successful. Now, we don't have numbers specific to this relationship, but of the five and a half navigators who are contracted by the county, in 2016, they did house 300 people, approximately. Of those five, three of the navigators housed approximately 160 people. The reason that I reference those numbers is because those three navigators tended to be the ones that would work with the Community Prosecutor and the Sheriff Hot Team on the American River Parkway. In the new budget year, the county has rolled back the contract for those navigators, so those resources will not be available as they have been in the past. And I've just, I've heard discussion of it, so I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear of that fact. I know some of the new county initiatives may fill that gap, but it's been specifically referenced to our navigator, so we wanted to share that. And because it is a budget hearing, we will say that the navigators are contracted at approximately $60,000 apiece per year. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ben. Thanks for your work, too. Next, following Ben is Robert Copeland. Robert, and then followed by Therese May, followed by Darrell Rutherford.
Well, one, I don't think you can police your way out of the homeless problem over at American River. You need to gain the trust of the homeless population to do anything constructive. Yesterday, a few of us that are here right now went to State Capitol, where a few, we saw a similar member, McCarthy's staff member, one of his staff members, about SB 2 and 3, both was dealing with housing. The one is a bond issue, SB 3 is a $3 billion bond issue, and you need the help that people, the homeless population in Sacramento, which I don't think the city or the county has done a very good job doing in the past several years, if at all, until about this year. And how about all these vacant residential properties in the county, like on 44th and Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard? There's like two apartment complexes vacant. Why can't we do something with that? You need to house the homeless population and all the other people that are, maybe want to become homeless in the future, which are, there are plenty of people that are at risk of becoming homeless. So you're not making a situation, you're making it worse with this. Thank you.
Thanks, Robert. Okay. Following Robert, Therese May. Therese. And then Therese, followed by Darrell Rutherford, followed by Tom Biglioni. Good afternoon.
Thank you to everyone who has worked so diligently on this initiative. My husband and I moved into the Creamery Downtown last November and have become acutely aware of the complex challenges the city and the county face to resolve the growing problem of homelessness. As a social worker, I work with severely mentally ill folks and understand and feel compassion for the dozens of people that walk by our home daily. However, we still believe it is necessary to increase the funding to save the American River Parkway from further deterioration and degradation. Undoubtedly, enforcing the illegal camping ordinance will have an impact on our neighborhoods until more housing becomes available. That concern does not justify avoiding the responsibility to maintain this beautiful, essential environment for our community. The parkway should be safe, clean, and a beautiful sanctuary for our urban core needs. Increased funding is essential for the safety, public health, and preservation of the park ecosystem. We bike on the parkway, paddle our canoe on the river, and see conditions continually worsen with increased camping since the weather has improved. The camper interviewed on KCRA this week was adamant that he didn't want to live inside. Does his decision and others carry more weight than the residents and taxpayers who want to feel safe and enjoy a clean bike trail and water in the river? The appalling conditions of trash, a campfire, and lack of toilet facilities should be addressed immediately. We hope and ask that you make the decision to care for this wonderful asset in Sacramento County. Thank you.
Thank you, Therese. Okay. Darrell and Tom Biglioni, then Russell Rawlings.
Good afternoon, Chair, Supervisors. It's a pleasure being here again this evening. I understand that the challenges that you guys face are very complex and very daunting and can be very divisive within this community, and I just want to commend you guys for the efforts you have made to date allocating the resources to address the homelessness population and bringing services and other initiatives to fruition here. I am a little concerned with this notion of finding new, extra resources to bring to the American River Parkway to, that will further push folks off of the river, back into other parts of the community without anywhere else to go. We need to make sure that these resources that you do find are being used in a way that's going to address the housing crisis that we have now. We need a healthy continuum of options for the folks who have no place to call home at night. This would be a great opportunity to allocate these resources, to open up more emergency shelters, to address this larger continuum of housing options, to ultimately get to where we need to be with permanent supportive housing. I know that, again, that it's real challenging, but any type of resources that you have need to be used so that we can be competitive in some of the funding programs that are going to be passed here by the state, whether that's No Place Like Home, or the New Bond, or other sources that are coming in through the state. Every little bit of resource is going to help make the county competitive so that you can address this housing crisis and impact it in a meaningful way. So with that, again, I thank you guys for all that you do. So with that, again, I thank you guys for all that you do, and I know it's tough. The Housing Alliance is here to assist in every way possible. We hope that we can help find new sources of funding as well. So thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Darrell. Okay, Tom, and then Russell Rawlings, and then Chris Jensen. Good afternoon.
Hi, I'm Tom Biglioni. I'm a volunteer for the American River Parkway. I regularly canoe along the river, and I'm a resident of Midtown. I'm touched by the passion and the thoughtfulness of the comments of each of you here on the board, as well as by everyone who's spoken today. Clearly, it's a very complex problem. I'm going to speak on behalf of the parkway. You've heard already from so many what an incredible resource it is. I'm not a parent or a grandparent, but I take youth, family members, and lead canoeing trips on the river on a regular basis. From the first moment I laid eyes on the American River Parkway, I was amazed at what a treasure it was. And I grew up in the country about a half a mile from the San Joaquin River. Karen Hutchison spoke about the founding of that. The San Joaquin River Parkway is celebrating their 30th anniversary this year. They're struggling with the same issues that we are right here. And they're going to have the same difficulties with them. But the real difficulty, I'm convinced, is we're not dealing with the fundamental problems. William Dawson said it very clearly when he quoted Desmond Tutu. Stop pulling people from the river and go upstream and find out why they're falling in. It's time to take care of this resource. We need to address it. It's not only your responsibility, it is the city council's responsibility, it's the state's responsibility, it's a regional issue, and it's all our responsibility. But we do need to address it, and we need to take care of the resource. We need to clean up the parkway. I'm a big fella. I didn't always feel that way, but I'm a big fella. I've been challenged out there by pit bulls. And I'm worried. I stopped bicycling through the junction, past Blue Diamond and across to my office. I just won't go through there. If I have to come home late at night at dusk, I'm not going to do it. And if I'm not willing to do that, there are a lot of kids that are not willing to go out there, or parents willing to let their kids go out there. We need to take action. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, Russell? And Russell's followed by Chris Jensen, followed by Noel Cameraman. Hello, Russell.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Russell Rawlings, and I am the Director of Advocacy Services at Resources for Independent Living, the Independent Living Center in Sacramento and Yolo County. Prior to living in Sacramento, where I have successfully developed the skills to independent living, I was living in Houston, Texas, the fourth largest city in the United States. The city currently making national headlines as its anti-camping ordinance, analogous to the ordinance present in the city of Sacramento, is currently being challenged by the ACLU. The anti-camping ordinance, which does not have a functional equivalent within the county code, is being heavily enforced along the American River Parkway, could very likely present legal challenges for the county of Sacramento. Additionally, as it is the stated purpose of this initiative to clean up the American River Parkway, it is important that we all understand just what conditions our unhoused neighbors who have been pushed to the margins are in. We all agree that the parkway should remain clean and safe. And the first priority for this money should be to ensure just that by ensuring that something as simple as ADA-accessible porta-potties are available along the parkway so that those that are in desperate need of a place to safely relieve themselves have an option to do so. It's also important to acknowledge that the Sheriff's Department, Hot Team, and others that interact with this homeless population have very explicit and well-trained curriculum that enable them to understand how to interact with folks with visible and invisible disabilities. This is a very big problem as people with disabilities are often disproportionately targeted by law enforcement and have negative interactions. We all understand that the parkway is a valuable resource. I've used it myself. I enjoy it. And it's unfortunately our last line of defense for keeping people in the region that they grew up in. It's time that we allocate resources to make the parkway safe, but also to consider the lives of the people that are on the parkway and how to bring them back into our communities and make our community whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Russell. Okay, next, Chris Jensen, followed by Noel Cameraman, followed by Jeremy Hollis. Hello, Chris.
Good afternoon, Chair Natoli and Supervisors. My name is Chris Jensen. I am the interim Executive Director of Resources for Independent Living. Before I begin my prepared comments, I want to just preface it by saying that what I'm about to say does not reflect anything that I've heard from the Board of Supervisors. It's reflective of what I have heard in print and video media and what I've read on Facebook In the disability community, language matters. We like to use people-first language. We are not the disabled, we are persons with disabilities. I would hazard a guess that most people living on the river are persons with disabilities, visible and invisible. I stand with them in solidarity. I advocate with them and for them. RIL is there, it's my center, Resources for Independent Living, RIL, is there to provide resources, information, and advocacy for them. They are not the homeless. They are persons experiencing homelessness. They are my brothers and my sisters. Language matters. When I hear "round them up," I think of cattle. When I hear "move them out," I think of cattle. When I hear "push them out," I hear words of aggression and violence. I would like to hear words of compassion and kindness. By consciously choosing our words, I believe we can change how we think. And I agree that the American River Parkway needs to be protected, but until we have systems in place with adequate shelter and affordable and accessible housing, I believe it is premature to adopt the plan before the Board today. And in the words of Martin Luther King Jr., "It is always the right time to do the right thing." And if she were here today, I believe that my predecessor, Frances Grace Child, would say, "This is not right."
Thank you, Chris. Okay, next Noel, and then followed by Jeremy Hollis, followed by Dennis Greenbaum.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors.
Noel.
My name is Noel Cameraman, and I'm the Executive Director of Sacramento Loaves and Fishes. I urge you not to approve funding that increases enforcement of the no camping ordinance along the American River Parkway and Dry Creek Parkway as it further criminalizes the citizens of Sacramento who have found themselves without a home. As there is insufficient space in our current shelter system and a massive shortage of permanent housing, this money would be much better spent on creating additional shelter, services, and housing options that will have a much more impactful long-term effect as opposed to one that makes the lives of Sacramento citizens who have already experienced the trauma of having lost their homes and the trauma of living a desperate existence on the streets even more traumatic. Increased enforcement will not solve the root issue of homelessness. In this case, it is basically a waste of close to $5 million, which could be better spent on solutions like shelter, housing, and services. I urge you not to approve an action that will further criminalize the Sacramento people who have already fallen on the hardest of times. It is a responsibility of the county, the city, and the community to take care of our citizens experiencing homelessness. If we work together to find solutions to homelessness, we will find that we will spend less as a community on costly emergency services like 911 calls, ambulances, police, and emergency rooms. We will find that the parkways in other areas of our community will be more easily kept both safe and clean. Most importantly, if we work together, we will see Sacramento citizens who have previously been camping on the parkway move from homelessness to a home. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Thanks. Okay. And next, Jeremy Hollis, and then Dennis Greenbaum and Richard Harrison. Good afternoon.
Hello, my name is Dennis Greenbaum. Jeremy Hollis had to leave. I'm speaking on his behalf as well. I have been a board member of the American River Parkway Foundation for the last 13 years, and I think the speakers previously have stated the issues and the problems that are going on in the parkway. I don't need to reiterate that. I think Diana Poggetto, our Executive Director, stated it very thoroughly and very well. I just wanted to say that over the last 25 to 30 years, the Parkway Foundation has been conducting volunteer cleanups for trash, as well as burn restoration projects in the parkway, that have gone from simple cleanups of bottles and cans to massive dumpster-load cleanups of trash in the parkway. And one or two acres of burn restoration a year to 400 acres of burn restoration last year due to fires set by predominantly illegal campers. So the problem has become very serious for the parkway, and we strongly support the initiative. Speaking for myself and other board members, we all agree it's very important, and we thank you for your efforts.
Sweet. Thank you, Dennis. Okay, then next, Richard Harrison, followed by Joan Burke, followed by Jeremy Donaldson.
Good afternoon, Board. Richard Harrison, just an individual coming to speak on this. I support the measure and its maximum funding as the Board can make. I'm an annual park pass holder. I kayak on the river. I've been out there, and I've seen over the years where it's changed from a green, lush, outdoor, natural setting to a dirty garbage can. The amount of debris that's out there is horrible. And at times, I feared for my personal safety when I'm loading and unloading my kayak from my vehicle because of the number of people that are just milling through the parking lots in the parks. And I've also been concerned about whether or not my vehicle's going to be damaged by the time I get back because I know that there are the homeless or houseless, I don't know how people want to describe them, in the parks. They seem to be eyeballing the passersby and comings and goings of this park users. I noticed this last winter with the high water, the amount of garbage that I had collected high up into the trees, I believe this has been flowing down from the camps. I saw this in the Glen Hall access at Ver Park. I can see the tremendous number of plastic bags, tents, tarps, plastic buckets stuck in the trees. I do believe the county needs to work on cleaning this up, as well as the city. And my take on this whole process is that your plan, or this proposal is part of a plan to help the citizens and the homeless. Without going any further, I think I'll yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Richard. Okay. All right. Following Richard in, Joan Burke, and then Jeremy Donaldson, and Bob Horowitz.
I'm Joan Burke, Director of Advocacy at Loaves and Fishes. Excuse me. I too love the parkway, but I urge you to vote no today. Citing people for illegal camping is terribly expensive, and as so many others have pointed out, it just moves them from place to place and does not move them out of homelessness. If you wish to reduce the number of people living outside, use the $5 million to provide more emergency shelter and housing instead. It will have a far greater impact. Listening to that young woman from St. John's certainly made that point. Supervisor Serna has promised that the county's new 75-bed shelter will provide a place for the unsheltered, so it's okay to step up enforcement once that shelter opens. But there are 2,052 unsheltered people on any given night in this county. How are they to squeeze in to those 75 beds? That's 27 people in every bed. How will that work? We need a response commensurate to the size of the problem. Spend the $5 million on shelter and housing, or don't spend it at all. Spend it on what will actually work to reduce homelessness and homeless camping in the American River Parkway. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Okay, thank you, Joan. Next, Jeremy Donaldson, and Jeremy's followed by Bob Horowitz, followed by Joe Allen Arnold. Good afternoon, Jeremy.
How's it going? I live on the American River Parkway, honestly.
Oh, you're on television, I think.
Yeah. The problem is, is we have no problems with, I mean, we should honestly be helping to clean it up as we do make the mess, but you could also use that as a deploy to rehabilitate and re-employ people. Because once you have that foot in on a job, it's a whole lot easier to get another job. It's really hard to get a job right now. I try and try and try. I was General Manager of Little Caesars Pizza in Tucson, Arizona. I came back out here for my mom, she wound up dying, and I just stayed out here. And I ain't been able to find a job since. I've been out there 14 years almost, between West Sacramento and Folsom Lake. It's not easy getting a job. I do whatever I can on side work, but that really here there, whenever I can get a phone or whatever, you know, Craigslist is great. But in all honesty, if you were to like employ the homeless to clean it up instead, that would probably generate a whole lot more outcome of people wanting to actually get back into work. That's the way I think of it, anyway. I'd have no problems doing it like that, at all.
All right. Thank you for your suggestion, Jeremy. Okay, following Jeremy then, Bob Horowitz, and then Joe Allen Arnold, and Tracy Harper. Hello, Bob.
Hi, thank you, Chairman Natoli, Supervisor Serna, Supervisors. I am here to support the measure. There's a certain bittersweet irony, I guess, that after working for 15 years or so to try and get some, a pilot program for off-road biking on the parkway, that the condition of the parkway in that time has deteriorated so much that we're here today, and I can echo the sentiments of Diana and some of the other people. You know, the parkway that I see today in some places is unrecognizable from what it was even five years ago, and that if we don't step in to do something soon, that the resource will be just completely destroyed. You know, one of the success measures of the new program is to get new stakeholders out there, including youth, things like that. So, you know, the youth are going to be the future stewards of this parkway, so we need to make sure it's clean and safe for them. I'm definitely hearing from some of my people that, you know, they're nervous about going out there. I wouldn't say that's a majority viewpoint, but there's quite a few that are like, "I'm not going out there until the county cleans it up." So, you know, unlike some of the other stakeholder groups, we don't have the luxury to go upstream. Our pilot program is right down there, and that's the only place we're allowed to go. So that's where we're going to be, and it'd be nice to be safe, and it'd be nice to, you know, not see some of the stuff that we've seen lately. I am not without sympathy for people currently experiencing homelessness. It seems like you're doing a lot. I think that hopefully we'll find resources to do more, but in the meantime, I think we need this. So I want to thank you all for taking the time out to discuss it, and hope for your vote.
Good. Thank you, Bob. Okay. Thank you, Bob. Okay. Joellen, then Tracy Harper, and then Alexandra Reagan. Good afternoon.
Hi, I'm Joellen Arnold. Thank you for taking time to listen to all of us. I live in midtown, and I have to admit that I'm a repeat offender. For the last 15 years, I've been taking my dogs, who are now 15 and 17, to the river, and they are frequently off-leash. And that's kind of an old topic, is that there's nowhere in Sacramento County where it's legal for dogs to be off-leash, where there's water nearby. So, anyway, right now, they're into aquatherapy. Walking in the river is good for their old legs. Anyway, my point is that I've been doing this for years and years and years, and I've never been cited, because there aren't enough rangers to go around to look for scofflaws like me. And all of the other people that I see on a daily basis, who are carrying their bottles of alcohol down to the river to consume it, and then leave the bottles there. People who are carrying their barbecue grills down there, and then dumping their hot coals into the sand when they're done. You know, all those things that are happening, the rangers are just not capable of coping with them, to say nothing of the camping that's also going on there. So, I'm in support of your, whatever this is, initiative, that's what it is. And I really appreciate the work that everyone does to protect the Parkway. It's just so sad to see trees stripped of their bark, and the burn areas, and the trash, and cigarette butts. And, you know, I work with a little group called Friends of the Riverbanks, and we try and take children to the Parkway once a month, and show them how beautiful it is. And I take groups out there for a bat night every year. And we kind of have to fight our way through the people who are partying on the banks, and ask them to step aside, you know, let the children through. Anyway, this year, we're going to ask for a ranger to go with us, but, you know, we probably have to ask them to go on their own time, because, well, there's not enough money to pay for the rangers that we really need. So, I support your initiative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joellen. Okay. Next, Tracy Harper, Tracy. And Tracy's followed by Alexandra Reagan, and then Shereen Miles. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, good evening, right?
Yeah, we're getting there.
Thank you so much, Chairperson Natoli and Supervisor Serna, for your leadership on handling this issue, or coming up with some proposals, and providing that energy that's really needed to address. I think we've heard a myriad of issues going on out there. And one of the things that kind of struck me, too, was, we're, you know, feeling very compassionate towards folks that are, you know, down on their luck, and that are experiencing homelessness at this point, but I guess we wouldn't be having this conversation if they were practicing a little bit better safety, and more lessing their impact on the river, quite honestly. So, I think it's the activity that they're doing out there with hypodermic needles and other garbage that's a bigger issue. But I will say that since I've been cycling on the river, on the Parkway, almost four to five days a week for the past seven, eight years, that has gotten dramatically worse. The last three years in particular, just, you know, now that the issue is front and center, I'm paying a lot more attention, and just riding at lunchtime last Thursday. I live in the Sierra Oaks neighborhood, and I got on at Watt, which is ostensibly a little bit safer in terms of what you're going to come across. And I came across seven or eight homeless men just on that ride from Watt to Sunrise and back, two of whom had pit bulls on very sketchy-looking ropes or cords, and not really leashes, that were just right on the pathway. I didn't go looking for homeless camps. I didn't go looking for homeless individuals. They were just there, right on the Parkway. One, in fact, was laying down with all his belongings at the William Pond Access, which is at the Ardern Way area that we've heard about with the walking groups. I've never seen until this last week, someone midday, laying down with all their belongings and camping right adjacent to the bike path. So, I think this is a really urgent need. I think we're at a tipping point, quite honestly, right now. And I really appreciated the person that was commenting about getting things cleaned up before the winter rains come again, because of all the pollution that's out there that's going to go into the water that we all, at some point, drink, I believe. So, anyway, it's been really disheartening, depressing, and quite honestly terrifying, especially when you look at the number of arrests and the number of people that are out there. But I don't want to let go of this jewel. We're going to fight for our jewel, and the cycling community especially is going to fight for it, because it means so much to us, and I think so much to Sacramento. So, thank you, and I really appreciate the time and voiced my support for the initiative at the $5 million level. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Tracy. Okay. Following Tracy then, Alexandra Reagan, Alexandra, and then Shereen Miles, and then Mary Tappel.
Good afternoon. My name is Alexandra Reagan, and I came today to oppose this initiative. I live in midtown near the American River Parkway. I was born and raised in Sacramento, and I spend a lot of my free time on the American River Parkway. I also talk to a lot of people who are experiencing homelessness, both who are trying to survive on the Parkway and within our city and county limits. I've also experienced homelessness myself. It breaks my heart to hear people today talking about humans like they are trash that need to be cleaned up. I would now like to share a poem that I wrote, called "Homeless in Sacramento." If people who have hit bottom, and are pigeonholed, and living ignored on the street, what better place than the riverbanks to retreat? When just being is a crime, and a bad rap won't find you work, I'm either under the freeway or on the river. What's worse? I know I'd make my camp on the river. It's shady, and it's cooler in the summer. If it's illegal to share food with me, and I'm cited just for resting, when I'm just trying to take some weight off my feet, I'd go to the river. It all happened so fast, my mom kicking me out. Still, I made all the calls, and the county couldn't help out. If all your belongings can be cleaned up in an instant, and you can't stand too long in front of any storefront, where else would you go but the river? Away from the public's scornful eye, finding small comforts in the rhythms of nature, with the cold current and a few fish passing by, I'd go to the river. Thank you for listening. Until you have tried the phone numbers on the list that is given to people to purportedly connect them to services, you cannot know what a dead end these phone numbers are. Essentially, your name will be added to a series of waiting lists, if you're lucky. What do you do while you wait? I oppose this initiative. Please vote no. Let's spend these dollars in a wiser way. If we don't want people living in the Parkway, let's give them somewhere else to live, and the services that they need. Thank you.
Thanks, Alexandra. Thank you for sharing your poetry. And next, I have Shereen Miles. Shereen? Mary Tappel, Mary? And then Mario Rupert follows Mary Tappel.
I'm Mary Tappel, and a big thanks to particularly Supervisor Serna and Chair Natoli for carrying this issue, and I hope the rest of you support having a decent place for particularly our local youth, and there's a lot of low-income youth of color. These are some of those that me and my husband and some others helped with getting bicycles. This is a few years back. And we made a point that the North Sacramento Bike Way here, which they helped clean up to get the new bikes, is, it's connected to the Lower American River Bike Trail, and we are trying to get the local youth to use their Parkway for all the reasons you've heard about, and also for their supportive parents here also in the picture to be doing the same. And they need it desperately, and so we desperately need the full funding of this initiative at the $5,000 level. And we also need continued enforcement against these bike chop shops. This one happens to be on the land side, so it was cleaned up by the Police Impact Team, but we've gotten them appearing also on the waterside. Fortunately, the rangers will enforce against them, and I particularly hate these bike chop shops when I see a ride in everybody's face, the frame of a small, pink, little girl's And there were no little girls in that illegal camp. There were two adult men, almost six foot tall. And here's another picture of some of the, just the garbage that we need cleaned up. This happens to be on the land side, but I have seen the same on the waterside. This had loose dogs on it, and it was cleaned up by the Police Impact Team. This is along the Two Rivers Trail approaching Highway 160, if you go upstream. This, and I'll next show you some of the trash that your current Parkway management has removed, and very efficiently, from the lower Parkway. This is along the Two Rivers Trail. This has been cleaned up. This is right under Interstate 5, and all that garbage has been cleaned up. And all of this garbage, all this garbage also has been cleaned up. This needs to continue, so particularly our local youth of color can access and use their Parkway. There's tens of thousands of them. I'm very thankful for the people from the local schools who have testified. My honor and grandkids are among these kids.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Okay. Thanks, Mary. Next, Mario Rupert, and then JT Marcel, and then Kimberly Doss.
Hi, good evening, supervisors. Mario Rupert. Listening to actually some of the testimonies from earlier this afternoon kind of troubled me in regards to individuals not wanting to visit the Lower Reaches, or actually being quite scared to visit the Lower Reaches due to obvious reasons. I represent the Lower Reaches. That particular area, as we do know, does have its negatives, but I'm a very optimistic individual in regards to what could actually be, and what we could actually have in the Lower Reaches. You know, there could be adequate biking, there could be adequate boating, there could be rentals, there could be a lot of interpretations in regards to wildlife tours. Unfortunately, at this particular time, we cannot actually do that, due to all of the negative impacts that are currently taking place within the Lower Reaches. I, myself, have actually taken the extra step to become a certified California naturalist in hopes that I can actually provide services to the youth, and anywhere in between, to actually provide education for what actually lives and survives within the wilderness, surrounded by urban dwelling. I do actually support this initiative for the $5 million level, to actually make the Lower Reaches and the Parkway entirety as safe as it can possibly be, to have more foots actually on the ground with civilized individuals that I actually do love, and really find a refuge within the Parkway itself, to really get away from everyday lives. We do need to provide additional staff to assist with cleanups, especially with the legal trash. We also do need to encourage active recreational uses within the Parkway. And also, what I kind of do really want to touch on is that we are not here to really solve the homeless problems, we're really here to really cope with the homeless issues that we're currently having. We are here to attempt to deal with, cope those again, but we need to make sure that we have the safety for all of our citizens and also visitors within the Parkway. Currently, I do also want to address that people, and also some of from what I've heard in the past, that we are worried that the illegal campers would actually go out and flee the neighborhood, or flee the actual camps, but we also need to make known that they already have and will continue to be in our communities, because they don't necessarily reside within the Parkway 24/7, 365 days of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mario. Okay. Next, JT, and then Kimberly Doss, and then Amy Rutledge. Good afternoon.
Thank you, supervisors. Thank you, staff. Thank you for attendees, coming out, sharing your stories, and taking the time to share your thoughts. I'm here today for the Parkway. I do support it. Something that I think has been not mentioned is thanking you folks for what you've done to continue funding homeless issues, as well as adding to that this year. But what's been overlooked is the Parkway. The Parkway's been overlooked. I do not see homelessness as an illegal activity, but there are definitely illegal activities going on in the Parkway, and these are the things that are destroying the Parkway. Things like bicycle chop shops, wire stripping, mail theft, attacks of off-leash animals, campfires. These are illegal activities, and these are what are destroying the Parkway. Trash out there, human waste, debris, water pollution, these are destroying our waterways. These are things that are real, and they're happening today. I want to see that the Parkway gets cleaned up, and I personally wouldn't have a problem people using the Parkway to camp if they were doing it responsibly. But the fact is, that's not what's happening out there. It's not being done responsibly. We've seen pictures. You've seen the reports on news, and that's the reality that's out there today. I encourage you to fund this initiative, help support your folks out there. We've heard that more rangers out there would be helpful. Again, I'm not looking to see that camps are being tagged and people brought in for illegal camping, but the illegal activities out there are what should be the main focus, and cleaning it up. It's a real disaster, and it's a shame to see. Thank you.
Thank you, JT. Okay. Next, Kimberly, and then Kimberly's followed by Amy Rutledge, followed by Charlie Willard. Good afternoon, Kimberly.
Hi. Hello. My name is Kimberly Dawson, and I've been on the river for, in Discovery Park, for 10 years now, and it has gotten bad out there. It's not safe. More rangers at night would feel safer, but you guys just want to go in there and you just want to take us out. The solution to the madness would be to take this money that you're going to put into the police, and put it into our community, because we're not all bad people. Even though we are a community, so what one bad person does, we all have to ride that. But I'm not that bad person. The animals, okay, they have the leisure law, okay? We understand that, but there's not that many dogs in Discovery Park. For us to sit up there and say, "Okay, well, these are the things that you need to respect because of our children." Do you guys talk about how unsafe it is? Have you once said anything about the 290s that suffocated us? We're scared, and we're not in their categories. Did one time, did they say, "What's the solution on..." This money is supposed to have been a big thing about getting the homeless solution solved. How do you do that when you take in, "Give us more police," which I like, because I'll be safer, but to come and keep ticketing us, keep ticketing us? Let's work together, because we got people out there. I know every year, they have concerts in Discovery Park. One day, I came out of my path, and I'm looking at the archery, and there's so much garbage out there because of the concerts. I picked up a bag, and I started picking up garbage. The Supervisor John from the cleanup crew of downtown Sacramento came flying up in his truck and asked me why I was doing that. I told him, I said, "You know, I recycled the night before, and this is my front yard." So, he gave me a bag, and he said, "Kimberly, can you put a crew together? It's only $5.6 to a crew." They get paid $10 an hour to help pick up that park. And I believe that we should try and put into, like, rehabilitating our community. Don't step on us and keep us down. Pick us up and dust us off. Take that money and put it into us, because you'll see that there's a lot of people that work. We got many young adults, not as many as we have, it's mental health, but we can't beat them up, and we can't, we have to be there for them, we have to help them, too. We need help, not tickets.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. You guys have a great day.
Thank you, Kimberly. Thanks for being here. Okay. Following Kimberly then is Amy Rutledge, and then Charlie Willard, and Mike Cochran. Yeah, come on. Hi, Amy. Good afternoon, Amy.
Good evening. Thanks for listening, all of us. We really appreciate that. Thank you to Phil Serna for taking the initiative, and all of you to listen to this and to think about this issue deeply. So, I'm Amy Rutledge with the Sacramento Valley Conservancy. I've been Executive Director of that organization for over 20 years. We work to provide safe and connected open spaces for people in Sacramento, in the region. And one of our biggest initiatives has been to add to the American River Parkway by acquiring the Deer Creek Hills Preserve out south of Folsom, which is- out south of Folsom, which is now almost 4,500 acres, and we're working to connect that up to the parkway, which would be 13 new miles of parkway. It's very exciting for the future. We like to think ahead. This is the other end of the parkway, and we also have a major initiative in the downtown section. We, three years ago, worked with, actually now four years ago, worked with the state to acquire an old boy scout camp, Camp Pollock, which is 11 acres and right next to the 160 Bridge. We are at ground zero. We operate this facility for the state. The State Lands Commission owns the property, and we lease it. We have a long-term lease. We spent, I spent about 10 years putting together a real estate deal and managing property that has generated income, along with raising donations, to put $1 million of our own private money into renovating the Camp Pollock Lodge last year. We have had over 25,000 users for things like weddings, quinceañeras, reunions, you name it, people walking for bird watching. We have licenses with paddleboarders and kayaking groups. We've had over 10,000 volunteer hours and over 1,300 volunteers, including many local companies. We're really working at ground zero to make it safe to access the parkway in the downtown area, and we are bringing youth out. Twenty-five, over 6,000 youth have visited the property, and that's increasing dramatically every year with our program, Youth Education and Storage Ship Program, otherwise known as YES. So we're about future positive vision down there. We're about saying yes to users. We're about making it safe. We have invested, like Kevin McCarty and you all are thinking of investing in something that is one of the best things about Sacramento, and should be the shining jewel of downtown as well as suburban Sacramento. And I have lived here and raised my kids and went to Sacramento High School, and I will tell you that to abandon this would be to abandon the best thing about Sacramento. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Okay, Charlie, then followed by Mike Cochran, followed by Lilly Allen. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I would like to thank the board, and especially Supervisor Serna for taking on this difficult and important issue. I am a South Natomah resident, and I spend almost every day on the parkway, either in my kayak or on my bicycle. I see everything all along the river, both from the river end from the trail. I'm not here to support criminalizing homelessness, and I hope, I don't think anybody in this room is, but we need to stop the criminal activity on the parkway and to protect our natural and recreation resources. The parkway is not the solution to homelessness. If we didn't have the parkway, we would find another way, and we need to find another way. Safety is a big issue here, and it takes several aspects. One is safety for the people, both the homeless people and the park users. The homeless people are just as likely to be a victim of criminal activity as anyone else. We need the additional rangers that Supervisor Serna has proposed. Our water and land of the parkway need to be protected from human waste. There seems among some people to be a belief that the, this activity on the parkway, the homelessness living on the parkway, is something that's going to be with us for a while. If that's the case, we have to have some kind of sanitary facilities out there. Five-gallon buckets, either dumped in the river or buried, are not acceptable. We would not allow this anywhere else. The safety for our wildlife and protecting their habitat is important. Yesterday, I counted 20 tents on the south side of the river, just between Highway 160, and the areas are excavated, there's garbage. Jack Olin's cartoon in the Bee Gees says that the wildlife don't want to be, they want to be nimby's. Well, they don't vote. We need you to protect them. We need you to protect everybody. I live on the lower end of the parkway, and maybe I'm foolish, but I still use it, but it is scary at times. It is not right for the lower part of the parkway to be taken away from those who live near it. I understand that the whole parkway is a problem, and I ride my bike on the entire thing, but this lower end of the parkway, particularly from Sac State down, is considered very dangerous for many people. I urge you to support Mr. Serna's message. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay, next, Mike Cochran. Is Mike still here? Okay, I'll call him, maybe he stepped out. Lilly Allen, Lilly, and then Lilly's followed by Rick Betis and Brayden Murphy.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Lilly Allen, and I'm a resident in midtown Sacramento, and I love the parkway. And I want to say thank you for the deep thought and consideration and patience for having this meeting and listening to all of us. I am really concerned about the increasing among vulnerable populations on the parkway, and especially the unhome people there. However, I don't think having a healthy parkway is mutually exclusive with having, with helping homeless people. And I want to encourage you to vote yes on this measure to the $5 million funding agreement. The parkway is the crown jewel of Sacramento, and we haven't been treating it like that. It's what drew me to live in Sacramento and really want to put down roots. I love biking there. I love running there. I'm a member of a running group. I work along the parkway, and it thrills me. And I want to compassionately show the members of the unhome community how we can help them while also preserving this for my future. I can't wait until Supervisor Serna takes on homelessness with this same passion and zeal, but until then, I really want to preserve the parkway. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Lilly, for being here. Good comments. Okay, Mr. Betis. Rick, good to see you again.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman de Troley and board members. Rick Betis, I'm speaking as a person, it's really a dilemma for me, because I'm speaking as a person who, for many years, has been a volunteer on the parkway, but I've also been a volunteer in various homeless programs for many years, and it is really a thorny issue for me. I certainly agree with those who believe the parkway needs cleaning up and all. I have a little more concern about the, you know, the law enforcement aspect of it. I'm one that tends to think towards providing as much as we can to solve the homeless program on a long-term basis, and as opposed to spending money on the law enforcement aspect. And I think the law enforcement estimate might be a little bit low, because if you think of the cost of incarceration, I think the cost may go up. My volunteering on the parkway, I have not been a parkway user that much, but I've been volunteering on cleanups and plantings and removal of native, non-native plants and all, and that didn't endanger the fear that a lot of people have, but, so maybe I was just fortunate in that respect. And as a volunteer with the homeless programs, I've been an overnight host, and when you share meals and share the floor of a church hall with the homeless people and get to know them, it results in empathy and feeling of responsibility as opposed for enmity and fear. So I would hope, if you move forward on this, I think you will, that you emphasize the compassionate nature of it and put more effort into the homeless program. I hope you, you work with the city on a comprehensive program to end homelessness on their, you know, the Place Like Home program, and hopefully, when the state grant money comes in, we can work towards ending homelessness. But, so wish you luck, and thank you for looking at this so seriously.
Great. Thank you, Rick. Thank you for your comments. Okay, Brayden, Brayden Murphy?
Good day.
Okay, great. And then Brayden, followed by Corey Brown. Good afternoon, Brayden.
Right. So when I see the illegal camping on all these spreadsheets, I change it in my head to people that are just trying to survive, people who are the weakest in the county and need the most help, and have nowhere to go whatsoever, and they have resorted to the American River Parkway. Now, I agree with most people here. I want the American River Parkway to be great. My wife and I are hoping to have kids soon. I would love that to be an opportunity for my kids. But we're talking about human lives, and this is a publicity stunt by Phil Serna to make the people happy that want to go on the American River Parkway while saying we have a facility coming soon that's going to help 75 people. When we hear about the number, 2,400 homeless people, those are the people who have filed as homeless, and it doesn't mention the thousands of people who are couch surfing and can be on the streets. So first of all, it's disingenuous when we use that number, 2,000, when those are the only the people that have filed homeless. If we have already calculated how many people are on the American River Parkway, and we know how many it is, and we're opening a tent city, or we're going to partner with the Sacramento City to open the old ARCO to give homeless people a place to go, and then we say we're going to clean up the American River Parkway, that's one thing. What we're saying here is we're going to spend another $5 million of taxpayer money on top of the cost that it's going to take to prosecute our most vulnerable. What we need to do is open up a tent city at a minimum. Like I said, open up something like ARCO Arena, so that when these people are pulled off of the parkway, they'll have a place to go. All we're doing is pushing the problem along. It reminds me of when my grandma would let me open a present on Christmas Eve, and I'd open one, and then she'd ask me, "Do I want to open another one?" Of course, I'd say, "Yes." I'm a kid. If I'm a cyclist, if I'm a biker, if I'm somebody that likes to go fishing, of course, I'm going to want to put $5 million in to the American River Parkway. And I don't blame anybody for that. But where are these people going to go? I live in Folsom. I represented by Sue. I was a Blinner guy. I supported Blinner, which Blinner, by the way, paid people to work on his campaign that we're homeless, and like numerous homeless folks said, "They'll work if given the opportunity." I was really happy to read that Sue will not support this, and I hope she sticks with it. How many taxpayer dollars can we spend when we're going to hurt the homeless? This is sad by Phil. This is a joke, and it needs to be voted against. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Brayden. Okay, following Brayden, then is Corey Brown, followed by Deborah DeRozier.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board of supervisors. My name's Corey Brown. I'm a 32-year resident of Sacramento, and I believe we have two tragedies to address, and I think both need urgent, urgent attention. I appreciate the actions of the supervisors. In terms of providing more housing, a very critical need, there's various important steps to take, including replacing the redevelopment funds for affordable housing that we lost with the state's budget solution. Important steps to take are passage of SB 2 and SB 3 in the legislature that can provide $200 million to $300 million of continuous funding, making sure some of those funds are earmarked for the, especially the very low-income individuals that can be helped in these situations as well, as well as working to give you more tools, whether it be AB 1505, AB 1568, and others, to make sure we do have more housing for, for folks in need, because it is, it is a true tragedy. Secondly, we need to make sure we're taking care of the American River Parkway, and that's why I appreciate Mr. Serna's leadership and urge you to approve these funds. I've used the American River Parkway for those 30 years. I often ride my bike down the place where the Sacramento Bee two weeks ago identifies the hotspot for crime and other activities. We need to make sure the parkway is safe for our children, that our children don't fear going there, that our families don't fear going there. This is the premier recreational area for Sacramento, and it's the model for the country. This is one step you can take in addition to others to make sure that our families are safe in the parkway, while we're also working on other activities to expand affordable housing. Please address both issues. Continue your work to expand funding for affordable housing, support state efforts, and please approve this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey. Deborah's next, and then Evelyn Drinker will follow her, so. I know I mispronounced her name, Deborah, so say it again, so we got it for the record, please.
Hi, my name's Deborah DeRozier. I live in Carmichael.
Hi, Deborah.
Everybody here has had so many things to say that I've learned new stuff to say that I wrote earlier, and it doesn't even make sense now. But here's what I know. We need more rangers. We need to clean up the parkway. We need to install bathrooms. We need to fund more affordable housing. We need to open up more temporary housing. But something that nobody said is that this isn't funded. This program doesn't have money. You're taking 12, or 1.2 million from a fund in the county of, what is it, solid waste? You're taking solid waste money away from solid waste. That, if you have an extra 1.2 million, put it into roads. I mean, I use a road every day. We have problems in the county that, you know, this isn't the only problem in the county, but what needs to happen first is the housing, the temporary housing needs to be in place and functioning, and have openings where there's more places to go than there are people that need it. And then, then you can figure out, you know, how to get people nicely out of the parkway into a welcoming home where they can enjoy living with a roof if they want. But, you know, the county, the county has debt to pay, too. I mean, there's $38 million of intra-fund money that's waiting to be paid back that, that says that it's a credit challenge. If you got an extra 1.2 million, put it in there. Or how about some, what, you have some bond debt, about $1.8 billion in bond debt, you could put 1.2 million towards. I mean, come on, you guys, this isn't ready. You're not ready for this. Let these people live.
Okay. Thank you, Deborah. Okay, next is Evelyn Drinker. Is Evelyn? Okay, maybe she may have left. Then Bob Venditti, followed by Sandra Strong. Bob?
Board of supervisors, thank you for hearing me. I came here today more to learn about this than to present my own opinions, but I'm a lifelong native resident of Sacramento. I've enjoyed the American River since I was a little kid, long before there was the American River Parkway. I strongly support the parkway, and I, naïve as I am, don't see this as a parkway versus homeless issue simply. Funds are the big issue, certainly. As I said, I came, woo, more to learn than to speak, so forgive me. The most important comments I heard today, I think, were metrics. How do you judge progress on the parkway? I've used the parkway all of my life. I've used it for fishing with my dad, camping on private property before there was a parkway, running. I'm a member of the Buffalo Chips Running Club, paddling, canoeing. I've commuted to work downtown. I'm not sure I do that lately from the news reports I hear, from Wad Avenue, Discovery Park, Old Sacramento in South. The other thing that struck me was the lady who spoke about nature. Would she rather camp out under a freeway or on the parkway? Unfortunately, it's turning to be less and less nature all the time, and I see a few more bucks in the regional parks budget as perhaps helping that on all fronts, getting some connection with the people without homes at the moment, getting them to services. At the very least, maybe we need to provide some sanitation, potable water, and dumpster facilities, if not hazmat needle cans for users of the parkway. The other thing, the comment that I heard was residents of Sacramento who just happen to be without homes. I have no idea how many people out there are residents, quote-unquote. I come from a time when Cal State and UC tuition had resident and non-resident scales, which were grossly different. You know, worst case, some people look on this as building, and they will come accommodations for those without homes. You know, where do you draw the line? I appreciate all your attention to this and regional parks, and thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you for being here. Okay, we have about a dozen more speakers here, so we'll keep working through them. We have Sandra Strong. Sandra, and then Davi Rodriguez, next one after this one. So do we have Sandra? Sandra Strong? All right. Okay, then Davi. And following Davi will be Jeffrey Tartaglia. Hello, Davi.
I would like to propose a radical idea, and a little bit aside... I would like to propose a radical idea, and a little bit aside from what people will think about abolishing the anti-camping ordinance, and not for the reasons that I'm feeling very sorry about the homeless and all that, I'm just saying that for years, the county residents have been deprived of this. It is a perfectly good area for campsites. We could develop camps like so many other counties have done. Solano, Sonoma, they all have county, I'm sorry, county campsites. And if we were to do this, we would push some of the bad element out of there, because there would be more people, more beneficial people that would report crime, both day and night. Now, we shut the park down. It's a, all the good people must leave by a certain time, by dusk is what it is, and at that point, we're surprised when we wake up the next morning and all this unsavory element has moved in. The more people that you have paying customers is what they will be. Like the state parks and the federal park system manage to take this money from the campers and put it to good use to keeping the areas policed and clean. There is no reason we can't do that. We don't have to start big. We can start small, pick an area, and if it's successful, move on with it at that point. But it's unfair to close this area at night and only leave it up to, like I say, the unsavory element that tends to move in there. And to complement this, we should go to the Fish and Wildlife Service and try and overturn that 40-years-long ban there is on night fishing above the AV Bridge, because that will put fishermen who are normally responsible back again in an area where they can report crime at night, and it will also bring in the state fish and game people for no cost to us. They will begin to police the area some more. And I know this is an unpopular idea for a lot of you, but when you bring in campers, you have to allow campfires, which you have been banning. We need to look at this area to bring proper people back in there that will complement what we want to do there, instead of just throwing all the law enforcement on there that will have to do all the work by themselves.
Okay. Thank you, Davi, appreciate your comments.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Okay, following Davi, then we have Jeffrey Tardagia. Jeffrey?
Well, Don Natale, this is that one moment where we get to say 2020 hindsight, because if you remember back when I talked about budgets, and this was up before, and you were trying to decide what was going to do with the American River Parkway. To Phil, I wish I'd been able to convince your staff to do a little more listening. They still can't find the affordable housing or anything else related to this. To Sue and to Susan, thank you guys for going on the river to see just exactly how bad the American River has become. Patrick, I still got to talk with you, because I got to figure you out a little better. But the three of you guys know that I'm not going to be at the RT board meetings because of your last decisions. But this one here today is question mark: Can we use Discovery Park or team with the city? Because it seems like an awful lot of a major part of this problem for the Parkway is in the city, and the city is not making the effort to correct the problem. At the same time, I think, you know, because I remember when I was involved in Northridge with the earthquake, they took over a large park to use it for temporary housing. So move the people in the Parkway to a temporary camping area with the intention of relocating them. Also has been brought up here, gee, this wonderful former Boy Scout camp offers if-at-night, you know, whatever I heard from your program does not sound like a 24-hour program. You want to go in there, and you want to leave. It's the times when you're gone that lots of stuff goes on. It needs to be for a while that you are there all night, you set up stations at points that, along the grounds, that you are going to be there, seeing what activity, and you set up safe points with the supplies, with the type of resources: bathroom, garbage dump, you know, the things that are necessary, so you get feedback what's going on in the grounds, until you can get a whole handle on this issue. Yes, it is a gem and is right now being destroyed, but at the same time, until you find a way with dealing with those illegal campgrounds, which I suggest you is takeover Discovery Park or someplace else, and then maybe you have another place to move them until you have the resources.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
I was thinking about Capital Park, Jeffrey.
I'd love it. I'll be there.
Particularly visible.
Okay, John Foley, Joe O'Connor, and Laura Lyon. Or Lyon, excuse me. Okay. Good afternoon, John.
Chairman Natale, members of the board, my name is John Foley, I'm Executive Director of Sacramento Self-Help Housing. Part of what I do is support what I took, as I think you probably took also, was the major takeaway from Michelle Steep's presentation, that probably the most vulnerable people, the people who have the most concern about safety are the people on the American River who are not there by choice and are sleeping outside. And the gal she brought up talked about her dog being killed in a fire. There are, you know, it's scary to be outside. And I certainly am supportive of safety and including safety for the folks forced to live outside as part of, I hope, what your plan will end up being. I'm not sure I see that yet. You know, several years ago, when you or your predecessors had to cede responsibility to Sacramento Steps Forward and set them up, part of the thinking that I had, and probably some of you had too, was that they were going to be really focused on ending homelessness, and that they would be having a chance to be successful at that. And I know when we set up the Coordinated Entry System and did other things, we really thought that that was a realistic way to approach and think about the outreach teams that you set up through the Navigator programs and others. And as you know, it has not worked out that way. There's been huge frustration in the community, among your constituents, people who call you, I'm sure, every week complaining that there'll be somebody sleeping wherever in their neighborhood, and you call, get the call, and you can't fix it, you can't get that person off the street and into housing. And so the whole navigation system has been sort of shut down by the fact that there's, like sometimes we say, there's no place to navigate them to. Well, that's sort of a concern, I think, that many of us have with the program that you're talking about today, is that it's not clear that there really are good alternatives that these hundreds of people, or thousands, or whatever it is, that are sleeping along the river are going to have. And I think all of us assume they're either going to find other places on the river to go, or they're going to come into the other neighborhoods that aren't on the river, that don't happen at the moment, to have as heavy a police presence to force them off. It's not a good answer. All of us, including, I'm sure, people that are homeless, would like the river to be a nicer place to be, you know, with clean, safe places to be, with bathrooms, with water, with everything. Nobody's opposed to that. But, you know, finding ways to deal with the housing crisis and finding ways to be supportive of folks that are stuck in the midst of it, I mean, that's the real issue. And I think you're serious about addressing that, that's what I'm hearing, and I hope you keep thinking about that as you think about the American River issue. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay. John's followed by Joe O'Connor, Laura Lyon, and then Kelly Hopkins, and then we have just a few more after that. Joe, good to see you.
My name is Joe O'Connor. I'm a member of the Parkway Coalition, the Lower American River Task Force, Lower American River Bank Protection Working Group, and I live near the Parkway. I support full funding for the $5 million plan. Budgets establish priorities. I believe regional parks should be a higher priority. It's part of community infrastructure. I'm sure you're aware of a recent Valley Vision survey of local citizens, where the citizens voted regional parks as the number-one amenity, especially river parkways. They also said they would be willing to be taxed a little more to support the parks, so I don't know about that. Homeless camps in the Parkway is a big problem. They create health hazards for themselves and others. Think of Discovery Park Parkway, Discovery Park users. Waste is dumped into the river, upriver, flows down to the Discovery Park where people are, and children are swimming. Camps prevent use of large sections of the Parkway. Then there are the attacks on Parkway users by people, dogs, and fires. Admittedly, not all are caused by homeless or illegal campers, and not all of these are bad people. There's a trash problem, the costly cleanup. Solutions to homelessness needs a more serious thought and analysis. Parkway is not a solution. It's a public Parkway. More resources are needed to keep it that way. I urge full support of the $5 million plan, and I wish the Parkway wasn't getting mixed up with solutions to the homeless problem. It's a separate problem, and it needs more, better thought, more analysis.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Joe, thank you for your efforts over the years as well, so. Okay, Laura, good evening, and then Kelly Hopkins, and then Kate Hart.
Good evening, my name's Laura Lyon, I'm a local business owner, community volunteer, and a 17-year resident of Carmichael. I live about a block from William Palm Park. I'm in favor of this initiative, but I also believe it is essential to understand the face of homelessness in this community. Who are they? What do they need? Are they there by choice? Are they mentally ill? What are their issues? I also don't believe in warehousing humans. I know we have a very overcrowded jail system here. But I also think this is a quality-of-life question, everyone's life, those who live here, those who pay taxes, those who are struggling, and what is the quality of life that we want to achieve in the greater Sacramento region when people choose to live here? Quality of life is something I think we all look at in every city that we visit, in every community we visit, our transportation system, our homelessness, and I think we all have a responsibility to look at every aspect of our quality of life for everyone. And I have been in contact with Councilman Warren. I know that he has been trying to set up temporary housing in a park in his district and has not achieved that goal as of yet, but I think it coincides nicely with cleaning up the Parkway and helping those who are not choosing to be there. And I think the collaboration between the county and the city will be essential for our success, and I know money is always an issue, but I, someone who visits the park every day, I think we have a huge population of residents who live in apartments, and that Parkway is their backyard. They don't have a backyard, so they go there. I see large family gatherings on weekends, family celebrations, they go, they clean up after themselves, and they enjoy this incredible open space. I think, you know, we have to work hand-in-hand to keep their quality of life for them, as well as for those who are in great need. But I think identifying the face of who is in need is really, really important, so we know exactly what services to get to them. And so I applaud your efforts, and I hope you will continue to both advocate for the homeless as well as the environment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Laura, for your comments. Okay, Kelly Hopkins, Kelly's next, and then Kate Hart. So I don't know if Kelly left, and then Sean Harrison.
Hello? Good evening, I'm Kelly Hopkins. I am a longtime resident of Sacramento. I'm a cycling enthusiast, I'm a runner, I'm a coach at an all-women's gym, I'm a triathlon coach and a running coach, and I'm a mother. On a daily basis, I see the trash, illegal users, illegal burns on our Parkway. And despite my fears, I do continue to use the Parkway, and I bring my friends and family out, including my two-and-a-half-year-old son. As a mom, I'm horrified of the conditions in our Parkway. I fear what it will become. I wonder if my children will be able to share the same recreational joys I've come to participate in, in the Parkway. As I said, as a marathoner, a triathlete, I refuse to not use my Parkway. Despite my fears for my own safety, I refuse to be pushed out. Not all legal users have the benefit of being able to use the north part of the Parkway. I live and work in the area downriver of Business 80. There's no denying that the lower Parkway is the most underused by recreationalists. Statistical proof is in Strava apps. You can see the heat, you can see how much it's being used by recreational users. It's the most overused by illegal campers. I've participated in mile-north cleanups on behalf of the American River Parkway Foundation. I was the leader of that mile for a few years. I removed syringes, trash, shopping carts, tires out of rivers and streams. I've reported a half dozen of fires, biohazard, dump sites, domestic disputes, many. I've personally walked and biked through all of the Parkway. I've dodged drunk and high Parkway residents and off-leash pets. In 2009, my husband, also a bike commuter, was hit by an illegal camper who was both high and drunk while riding his bike to work. That day, he ended up in the ER with bite marks and had to, you know, go through testing and shots to make sure he was still, you know, in good health. I'm also very closely tied to the Parkway at Camp Pollock. I'm an SBC staff member, and I am the event coordinator of all events at Camp Pollock. As you know, we abide by the American River Parkway Plan. I've personally seen the transformation over the last four years of Camp Pollock as a safe place to visit the Parkway. I've camped there with my son. It's a high-quality, open space for both wildlife and people. This 11-acre gem has become an example of how much benefit there is to treating the entire Parkway like the jewel it should be. The Conservancy does have 24-hour staff there. We have an onsite caretaker, and we, like I said, we abide by the American Parkway Plan. We do support any increase in responsible and legitimate positive use of the Parkway. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly, for sharing. Okay, next, Kate, and then Sean Harrison, and then Stephen Philippi. Stephen.
Good evening, Chair Natale, members of the board, thank you. This has been a long hearing, and a lot of wonderful heartfelt things said. I am a, well, my name is Kate Hart, and I am a member of the Sacramento Valley Conservancy. This will be my 12th year serving on the board. I'm a past president, vice chair of the whole nine yards. And I am here today in that capacity. You've heard from our Executive Director, Amy Rutledge, and you've heard from Kelly, who is one of our very valued staff members. I'm here just to say that we thank you, Supervisor Serna, for making the proposal that you have. We strongly support option one at full funding, and with that said, we don't believe that there has to be a, you know, funding one or the other, take a position for homeless or against homeless, but we do feel that the Parkway needs a voice, and it can't speak on its own. And it is, you've heard that it's been referred to as a gem, a jewel, an asset, a treasure, and it is the heart of this city and region, and it should be treated as such, and we beg you to do that. And we think that you can absolutely do that without ignoring all of the other needs of this, of your citizens and your users. And just as an example, I know Amy had shared with you that, you know, we had put together and fundraised over a course of years enough money to rehabilitate the lodge, which is a historic resource, and we felt was important. We've also done native plantings and habitat restoration, again, along- We've also done native plantings and habitat restoration, again, along the riverside so that inner-city children, everyone, everyone can come for free to use and see the parkway. And like Kelly said, we really want everyone to be able to do that on all parts of the parkway safely and in the habitat that is naturally there without trash, without fires and burns, burn scars. And if we can do it on an annual budget of $600,000, I know you guys can do it. And we really just urge you to do that and find the funding for it, and we support you wholeheartedly, and thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
Okay, Sean Harrison, and then Sean's followed by Stephen or Stephen Philippi, Betsy Wyland, and I guess Craig Segal will be the last one. I have signed up, so, Sean.
Thank you, all of you, for putting attention to this topic. It's really important, as you know. And I would just state for the record, this is not an either-or. I know you're all working to solve both of these issues, but tonight I'm here to talk about the parkway. I grew up on the parkway. It changed my life. It shaped my career path. And as the CEO of Soilborne Farms entrusted with stewarding the American River Ranch, which is on about mile 15 of the parkway, we're trying to provide that same opportunity for thousands of kids each year, many of, most of whom have never been down to the river before. So I'm hoping that with this investment, and hopefully it's just the beginning, we can protect this resource and then offer more opportunities for kids year over year to change their life, too.
Great. Thanks, Sean. Okay, Stephen or Stephen? Tell me which one it is, so.
Stephen Philippi.
Okay.
I just wanted to tell y'all I appreciate everything you guys are doing. I know you guys have got your hands full. I'm originally from San Antonio, another home over Riverwalk, by the way. Y'all are like an eclectic group here, y'all. Y'all have so many different areas of where y'all are coming from. It is, it's amazing, right? And what's amazing is that y'all have taken, I moved here December 31, 2012. I still got the accent, right? I'm just amazed that with all of these intelligent minds, y'all have not branched out to another city that has had the same problem. It's bewildering to me. San Antonio, a majority of its income is based on tourism, just like here, okay? They have integrated a problem that we had down there years ago, okay? I heard a fellow up there, he's originally from Houston, right? Way to go. But what I'm saying is, we, you know, we've developed that, a cognitive adaptation to the system, okay, where it is not anything negative on the budget, okay? We've integrated down there, right? And Chief, God bless you, 25 guys doing all this acreage? That's, you're doing something amazing. But what I'm saying is, down there, they use "scratch my back, I scratch your" policy with San Antonio Police Department, with the San Antonio Park Rangers, the county officers, all work together, including with Union Pacific, you know? We've got a lot of railroads down there, right? So if you incentivize that part of it, okay, that'll handle itself of the issue that you have here. Another thing what they've done is, on the homeless side, they've created down there a reward system for the homeless. You, okay, you need a leg up, we'll help you, right? You need to maintain this certain stature, and you need to go through this, including the counseling, right? That's all in retraining, reorganizing them to be proficient, right, on something maybe they're losing, right? The last thing I'll need to say is, that I'd like to say is, since I've been here, I've talked to three intake officers at the Sacramento jail. I wasn't a visitor.
You're terrified of that.
Wasn't a visitor. But I've also talked to several mental health counselors here, okay? If you don't have an incentive policy for the homeless, or you got, well, you had some people up here that were willing to work to clean up the area, that right there is going to save itself, y'all. I mean, God bless you, and Mr. Natoli. Thank you for representing El Gru. Appreciate you, sir.
You're welcome. Good, thank you, Stephen. Thank you for being here and for staying with us, so. Thanks for your comments. Yes, Mr. Sir.
I know we only have a couple more speakers. I wanted to thank Mr. Philippi for his comments and assure him that one thing that we can all agree on is that there's not any pride of ownership when it comes to looking at other jurisdictions, whether it's in California or across the country, where they've had successful models, either on the parkway preservation, protection side of things, or incentivizing, as you clearly stated, progressive programs to help those suffering homelessness. And when it comes to the full-service, low-barrier shelter that has been mentioned quite a bit in the staff report several hours ago now, that was actually something, an idea that we looked at, at the City and County of San Francisco, that they're implementing right now. In fact, some of us have even taken a tour of that to see how well it's working and to understand that in terms of incentives, when you bring down the barriers, when you have a place for people's pets, when you have a place where people can, you know, safely catalog their worldly possessions, all of them, and where people can, you know, enjoy double occupancy with the people they love, their partners, you begin to incentivize as best you can an opportunity for someone to say yes instead of no to help. Those are the three most common aspects of reluctance on behalf of folks that typically refuse the service is because they are rightfully concerned about those types of things. So I just wanted to make sure you didn't think that we're not, that we're afraid of looking at other places for.
No, no, no. As a matter of fact, San Antonio already said, I've got a couple of people down there I know pretty good, they said, you know, y'all need some help? Call them. Chief, call them. I'm telling you. I'm telling you. You know, they want to know what you're doing, then maybe they can save a little bit more money, you know, cut down staff a little bit. But I appreciate y'all.
Thank you. And you all come back. Okay. All right. Betsy, Betsy Wyland and Craig Segal, whoever, the last two. If there's anybody else here who wishes to address the board, now's the time to get your reservation form, otherwise those are going to be the last two speakers that we have, and I'll go back one more time and call those that I called earlier that weren't here when I called them, so.
Hi, Betsy Wyland, and I wonder if I get to throw a few yalls out? I lived in San Antonio for 23 years, so.
You've all been here many times before.
I left my yalls behind, I guess.
You're at the bottom of the list.
So Betsy Wyland, and, gosh, you all know me, I, you know, probably sick of looking at my face after 20 years, but I'd like to add, I wasn't going to speak, but then I thought there's a couple maybe original things I can add here that haven't been broached yet today. I'm a little bit sorry that we've narrowed this discussion down to the American River Parkway. Let's not forget that we have a regional park system. We have 15,000 acres. 5,000 are the American River Parkway. So what I thought would have been helpful to help inform this discussion as to whether we should increase the resources, monetary resources is what we're talking about here, including more money, I thought it would have been helpful to hear from our Parks Department and then, you know, from our ranger, our Parks Director, an analysis of, with the infusion of, let's say we funded at the highest, which we're all supporting in the initiative of $5 million, what does that mean for the entire system? Okay. How does that translate into help for, all of you know Supervisor Natoli, the issues we have out at Mather with Splash, and frankly, McFarland, the delta, which we've all but abandoned, I think, in general. We stretch from the delta to the Placer County line. So I would have liked to have heard that discussion, or that thrown into the mix when you're talking about this extra money. Then the second thing I just, 37 seconds left. Okay, let me try and do this quickly, is I meet monthly with our Park Ranger, our chief Park Ranger, and our Parks Director at the American River Parkway Coalition. I'm so sorry that we narrowed the discussion of law enforcement down to harassment of illegal campers. It's not that. You've, you, what, we have to have law and order. Those Park Rangers do not go out and hunt for, you know, people, they don't ask, well, before I help you, are you homeless? Are you on drugs? Are you, no. Are you in trouble? Do you need help? How can I protect you? Betsy Wyland, if you're beating up on somebody, you're going to get in trouble. I don't ask the victim what his situation in life is. Those Park Rangers provide order to everybody that's out on the parkway, okay? Law and order, keeping things running, everybody safe. So, and if I had time, I'd talk about our maintenance people. I have the utmost respect for our Parks Department, the utmost respect for what they do.
Thanks, Betsy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Here, here.
Okay. I have Craig Segal, and then I'll call the ones that I called earlier that weren't here then. Craig?
Hi, I'm Craig Segal. I'm an environmental lawyer. I live in town, spend a lot of time on the parkway. I also like San Antonio, nice place. Sacramento's pretty nice, too, for the record. Of course, so I just had a few things to say. I mean, the first is that I see this problem as really a problem of larger trends in the county. California is underbuilt on housing. It's been underbuilt for many years. The county's underfunded those services, has real problems with policing, and a sheriff with seriously bad relationships with a lot of folks in the county. So when we talk about policing strategy and forcing folks into the parkway, this speaks to development strategy, it speaks to policing strategy, it's a bigger question. But that doesn't mean that we need to wait on the bigger question to protect the parkway. It's appropriate to think seriously about preserving that area, while thinking about ways the county can incent housing, can drive shelters of the sort that you're talking about, can think broadly about how to serve all of its people. So what I'd encourage is moving forward with funding tonight and moving forth direction to staff, to think about this as a community policing initiative, as much as it is about moving forward to buffer against these trends, that is, protecting the folks now in the parkway, recognizing that this isn't just about moving encampments around, it's about protecting people who have to camp outside and don't have anywhere else to go while protecting the resource they're in until they can, of their own choice, move to a different housing option as the county invest funds. So I think seriously about this as a funding investment in resource protection and also in community management that is not about displacement, with explicit direction to staff to focus on that issue as an integrated effort. So I'm hopeful you all will keep thinking about this holistically, look at ways for the county to go from its underbuilt state into one that's denser, more supportive of its folks, and more protective of the vulnerable, while recognizing that that doesn't mean sacrificing critical resources like the parkway. Thanks for your work.
Great. Thank you, Craig. Thanks for your comments. Okay, again, thanks to all of our speakers. Let me run down one more time, folks that signed up that I called earlier that either weren't here or didn't respond. Sandra Strong, Evelyn Drinker, Mike Cochran, Shereen Miles, I knew Jerry Mahalas did leave, Barbara Leary, and Mark Levets. Okay. Well, thank you all. Thank you for your patience and for your courtesy extended to all the speakers, and certainly for your very thoughtful comments on some very topical issues and ones that obviously we're going to deliberate amongst ourselves during just a moment. So, okay, with that, then, kind of close the public hearing portion of this and bring it back to the board. I see Supervisor Serna's signed up, and I trust each member of the board is going to want to weigh in, so, Phil.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to share my thanks to everyone that's stayed with us and taken the time, again, to, now, during this third hearing on this matter, to be here in person and provide us what is of most value to us when we're asked to make informed decisions on your behalf, which is understanding your experiences. And we've heard plenty today, which I think, it's one of those rare times where I don't know that I disagreed with anyone that spoke. I mean, there's really not much to disagree with, whether you're a homeless advocate, whether you're a service provider, whether you're an executive director of a foundation, advocate on behalf of the parkway, or you're, you know, an average citizen that just wants to see your county do the right thing on both fronts. I don't know that I actually disagree with anyone that spoke today, and we had, what, over 60?
Yes.
60 folks testified today. So I want to start with that, but from a practical standpoint, to get this board to a place of a decision today, which will culminate three months of consideration of this, and careful consideration, I do want to take time to thank staff and our CEO, Nav Gill, who I think has heard us loud and clear about how best to refine this over the course of these three hearings, to an option that's in front of us for consideration today. So thanks to you, Nav, thanks to you, Rob, Paul, Jeff, other men, Chief, thank you, Dave, Cindy, I appreciate all your dedicated focus on this over the last several weeks. But in terms of a practical way to get us to a decision tonight, what I'd like to suggest is, and I'd like to do it in the form of an early motion, is that we start at looking at the $5 million level of funding for what's been thoughtfully proposed by staff that captures previous contributions, suggestions by this board about what the option would fund in terms of staff deployment. But we start there, and then we have a progressive discussion, and I'm curious to hear from my colleagues about how maybe we find some cost savings from that point, whether it be to Supervisor Peters' earlier suggestion about perhaps a less-than-full-time-equivalent community prosecutor, or Supervisor Frost's consideration for law student volunteers, or a different way to explore animal care and control. I think that might be the best way to help get us to a place where we can maybe quickly, given the lateness of the hour, get to a place of a decision. So I'd like to offer that in the form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second to the motion? Okay, we have a second. So Supervisor Kennedy seconds the motion. Okay, so I put it on the floor, and I think to the suggestion that Supervisor Serna offered, now certainly time for discussion and...
Could you take the board down so we, while we're discussing? We can't see the...
Right. Thanks, okay. Okay. All right, so with that, then...
The audience.
Patrick Kennedy has punched up next, and then Supervisor Frost, and then we'll keep working down.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I agree with Supervisor Serna as far as, you know, there wasn't really, you know, anybody up here who I couldn't agree with something that they were saying. This is, as Assemblymember McCarty accurately stated at the very beginning, is this isn't a black-and-white issue, there's a lot of gray here. I completely agree with that. I see it's unfortunate that we are, you know, having a discussion that we're pitting people who are in the unfortunate circumstance of homelessness against what's a natural resource for our city and county. And, I mean, we have here a tale of two crises. Homelessness, obviously, which we wrestle with, it seems like, at every meeting now. And I think that we've made great strides, frankly, even in what we did yesterday in securing more low-income housing, over 400 more units, and we're incrementally doing more and more with our new programs that we have initiated, that we haven't even begun to see any fruit from that work. But, you know, the other crisis we do have is, the parkway is in crisis. And the only way that we're going to address that crisis is to get the illegal activity to stop. My reservations with this all along have been, I think that it's a little heavy on the law enforcement side. I do agree with some of the speakers on that, and I fear that it will move, just move people around, but we have to try something. It's, you know, I, like everybody that spoke today, I grew up as a... It's, you know, I, like everybody that spoke today, I grew up as a user, I used to walk to school on the parkway, I used to ride my horse on the parkway. Bushy Lake is devastated, and that area, we just can't let it continue to deteriorate. So, even with my concerns, I do think that, not only, with the heavy law enforcement, I think, isn't the most cost-effective way to do it, but I'm willing to support it and see what happens and see how it turns out.
Okay, Supervisor Frost, you have next.
So I think I walked out right at the wrong time, but I think we're now discussing the amount of money that, and voting on that. And so, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Appreciate everyone that came and stayed so long to share their thoughts with all of us. I heard a lot of different perspectives today, and I want you all to know that I support the parkway. And I agree, the parkway's a jewel, and that we need to clean up the garbage, and we need to ensure that it's safe so that families and residents feel safe to go to the parkway. I feel a little bit disappointed, I guess, that it seems like this initiative is overshadowing what had taken place in our June budget hearings, where we had made a decision to add $6.5 million to homeless initiatives. We redirected $4 million into housing. We allocated $1.528 million for rangers and debris, and another $449,000 for debris removal along the parkway. We created new categories for rapid rehousing and for housing vouchers, and initiatives that are going to hopefully create more housing opportunities so that we're pulling them out of homelessness, whether they're on the parkway or in our cities. We're pulling them out of homelessness rather than chasing them somewhere. I also, you know, heard comments from, a couple of comments that resonated, that you need to house the homeless. There are other entities that have tried experiments. West Sacramento converted a hotel and housed 75 people from the riverbanks, and that didn't work out as well as they hoped it would, because for some people, it just doesn't, you can't just put them in a house and have it work. You have to work with them and wrap them with, you know, whatever they need at that moment. For some of them, it's titrating their medications, and for some of them, incentives is a great idea, but these are, some of these people are hopeless. If you throw out a bone, they may not even go for the bone because they're hopeless. That's why we need those social services, and that's why our county has worked for the last year and a half to put together a plan that we hope is going to have some better results. The county of Sacramento spends over $55 million a year on homelessness, and in the last budget, preliminary budget hearing, we added millions to homelessness. And that, we didn't say that is going to just pay for, you know, those in the cities and the unincorporated, that was for the entire county. So I'm assuming, my assumption is, that those initiatives are going to impact the parkway. And there's no reason we can't focus, and that we shouldn't focus on the parkway. We need to protect, I totally agree, we need to protect the parkway. I have some concerns regarding the money, so I guess I'll just briefly mention my concerns, and that is, there are people who said, you know, "I think you should spend $5 million", as though we had identified $5 million. We, I don't really think we did. And what we're, there were people who said you should prioritize homelessness. But, the truth is, solid waste, we can't, I mean, that's something we have, we're mandated to pick up the garbage. So, I mean, to, we have to fix the roads. We do, we work with homelessness because it's quality of life in the county, and we're trying to figure out how to fix a problem. And we've invested a great deal. I think the city of Sacramento invested something like $13 million. City of Sacramento is almost as big in population as the unincorporated county, so that kind of gives you an idea of the size of that entity. I was concerned about the fact that the money that was identified was borrowed from another area where it might compromise that area. I was also concerned that we were hiring staff for, with one-time money, that's not an ongoing money, so we don't have a clear plan going forward on how we're going to pay for it. I'm concerned that the county budget has about 1.5% in reserves. And of the large metropolitan cities in California, the closest one to us is Riverside, which has 9.2% reserves, and the average large metropolitan county has 26% reserves. We have a little over $80 million, and we should have $407 million in reserves. So, we have a responsibility, and those reserves, if there was an emergency, would last us for eight days. We have a responsibility to the taxpayers. Someone said, there were several people out there who had compassion for the residents and for those that use the parkway. Taxpayers are paying an estimated $40,000 a year for each homeless person. So, I think the homeless initiatives that we have put forward are good, and they're a good investment, because potentially, they're going to help individuals who are down on their luck, who need a leg up, and they're also going to help the residents who, and by the way, I visited our food bank, and they're feeding 135,000 people who are the working poor. Those are the people who are on the edge of homelessness. If they lost their job, they wouldn't have enough savings to pay next month's rent, and they could potentially become homeless. So homelessness isn't the only problem we have, but today, we're talking about the parkway, and we're talking about how much money we're going to allocate. And so while we're allocating those funds, we have to think about the coming years and whether or not we want to just start a program on one-time money that we don't know if the program will even help the homeless situation. These are my, these are reservations that I have. I like the idea of coaxing them out of homelessness. As we have those units, and hopefully we can ramp up those programs that we just passed in June, a month ago, we haven't even had time to ramp up the millions that we just allocated. So, I guess I'll just conclude and by reiterating, I'm disappointed because everyone forgot. We just allocated another $6.5 million and all those other resources to the parkways, and we haven't given it time to see if it can work. And so, where I totally agree with Supervisor Cernah, I think we need to work harder to make sure that we protect the jewel that the parkway is, we need to clean it up, but we can't start programs with one-time money, and we also have some grant opportunities. I'm hoping we could maybe use those grant opportunities to put more funds toward cleanup. But to start a plan around a program with one-time money and not sure where it's coming from, I don't think is prudent, given we have such low reserves.
Okay. Thanks, Supervisor Peters.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can hear.
Thank you. It's been a long day. I appreciate the time, all you've invested in it, and that so many people stayed. You can see the parkway has a lot of support in this community. And I support the American River Parkway. I always have. I've been on the board 12 years. I support it personally and professionally, and I'm not sure that I can, no, I can't support $5 million. I can see how we get to $3 million with the money that staff has identified, and if we do some reductions in the area of the community prosecutor where we share, and animal control people that, as Mr. Dickinson was here last time we talked about this, and he said, "We'll come out, just let us know." And I am not in favor of throwing money at a problem without knowing if it's going to work. And so I would like to start smaller and see if we actually, what we can actually accomplish with that. We won't really get anything going until January, by the time everything, everyone gets hired and the equipment gets in place. And so that also reduces costs, because we'd only be talking about less than half a year. But I still think we need to, we haven't done this before. I think we need to work together and not have such a big program that we don't accomplish what we want to accomplish, and see if we can do it with less money. So, I would really ask Mr. Cernah if he would consider a smaller amount, so we can all do this together.
Okay. Do you want to respond? Anyone comment for sure?
Sure, yeah, happy to respond. Yeah, I am very reluctant to go lower than, starting at the $5 million. And I think it has to do with the fact that, while I appreciate the points, the concerns that Supervisor Frost has mentioned, and that you've mentioned, Susan, the fact of the matter is, is that our parks budget has been incredibly, to Betsy's point about the whole system, has been woefully inadequate for decades. So, in terms of order of magnitude, what needs to be done, and what should have been done, in my estimation, decades ago, I kind of agree with what has been stated in a recent column, that I think $5 million is too low, quite frankly. I mean, if you look at the total general fund budget, and you look at our general fund contribution just for the entire park system, a fraction of that being the parkway, it's about 2%. That is...
But where's the money going to come from? We spent every cent we could in June. I mean, there's nothing left.
Yeah, but to start from the premise that we don't have the money assumes that we, you know, we shaped decisions about other needs, and therefore we're left with a remnant for parks, and I just don't see it that way. I see it from the standpoint of finally taking a necessary bold step, thinking creatively about source of funding, and...
But where will it come from? That's...
That's what, I thought that's what this will...
No, well, the staff identified...
Right.
A lot of money that could get us to, I think, $3 million. I just, I don't know where the other $2 million is going to come from. I don't want to leave here in state of fantasy about, you know, where it's going to come from. And, you know, that means staff's got to go back into the budget before September 6th and cut something.
Well, I'm looking to our county CEO. You, they were...
Volver of all problems?
Well, no, but I mean, we charged our CEO with looking at the three funding options. As far as I understand, the staff report, at each of the three funding options, it's clearly explained the source of funding and how we get to those levels, because that was what was the direction.
So what you have in front of you, there's a gap in all three of them.
Right.
And what we have placed with the budget that we're going to have public come Friday is that we have a placeholder for about $3.4 million out of the general fund as something that we can use for any kind of future projects, or we're going to identify that to pay the loans back. So since we didn't have direction, that's why you will see that line item in there. So based on the decision you make today.
That would have been helpful to have that information a couple hours ago.
Understood. So based on what, based on the direction that you give us, we will adjust the budget accordingly on that.
Oh, so you're going to give us a list of projects that we could spend the money on, including this one?
Correct. Depending on what decision you make today, if the whole amount of money goes, then you have your, we have our answer. If you don't allocate all of it, the money's unallocated at this point. In the budget message, since we had to get to the printers, we do indicate that you can use it for future projects or pay loans back. We will go back, starting this evening, if there's anything left, identify other projects for you.
Do you have, I can't see your desk, do you have a list of the projects? I know we have a list of projects. Do you have that with you or anybody...
I don't have that with me.
Committed to memory?
No, I don't. So once you make, whatever decision you...
Because it takes all those off the list, off...
Yes. I mean, and we have different funding things that we got during June budget that we were not able to fund. We'll start going through that list, if there's anything left, to make a recommendation back to you.
Okay.
But our whole purpose today was not to pit projects against projects. We were trying very discreetly to say, here's a part of money that you have. Understood that some of that is, there's some one-time money, but it's an ongoing funding that'll go on into fiscal year.
And there's also some one-time cost, too, right?
Correct.
Well, a lot of it's one-time cost, but I also think we need to report back, you know, next April to see how we're doing, whether...
Correct.
We've made a dent.
And then, that's our thought process on it, is that if you get, whatever direction you give us today, that will mold a portion of what we're going to present to you on September 6th.
Okay. Before I get to Supervisor Frost, I want to make some comments, because then we'll go back to the questions here we're still discussing, but I just wanted to say that, as it relates to the budget piece of this in particular, I would agree that you don't want to just, you know, fantasize about the money and, you know, and hope it's going to come there, but there's a lot of projections and budgets, and I've sat, certainly with this board for many, many years, as we've gone through an infinitely, almost always process of, you know, competing priorities and balancing budgets, and in good times and really awful times, making choices. And I think that this, that's what the five of us, and certainly our predecessors have taken into account, is that, you know, it's serious business, it's resources that are our tax dollars, our public dollars, and yet we have a $4 billion budget. Many, much of that money's restricted. But I'm also of the belief, and I guess, and I kind of said this kiddingly to, but not so kiddingly to Nav yesterday, just in conversation, that I know full well, as I sit here this evening, that certainly there will be costs that we didn't anticipate that will come forward somewhere during the course of any fiscal year, and that there are already salary savings that have already accrued, because all the things that we did in June, a lot of it hasn't been put in place. They get budgeted for a full year, and we'll budget them for a full year in the event that they actually do come to four in the next fiscal year. And that's the process, and we're going to get hit with some things that they may still do over at the Capitol over the next few weeks that may benefit us, and that may make that balance sheet look even worse than we thought it was. And that's just the nature of local government, county government, and so what we have to do is use our best, I think, take on what we project will come in, based upon the revenue streams that we know about, anticipate that there may be some dings along the way, and then we look at the priorities that compete for the dollars and for the decisions that we have to make, and it's just, again, in any given year, you don't want to be foolish about it, and you need to be prudent about it, and certainly have some reserves, and, you know, we burned through $150 million during the beginning of the recession in trying to keep services and programs and important elements, whether it was mental health, or law enforcement, or public protection, or our parks. And at the end of the day, and certainly Susan was here, you know, through those very difficult times, and Phil joined as we were in the middle of it, those were awful decisions. But we, you know, we laid off folks, we made cuts, and as we look to build back, I think one of the things that's really clear to me is that, you know, the choices that have kind of been laid out here this evening, and, you know, about what to do, and what I consider to be just, you know, a crying shame of the conditions of the parkway, but also as it relates to the conditions that people are living in and having to live with. And so whether it's the parkways, the neighborhoods, or it's the people, and whether it's those that have the least means, or others who, you know, go to work every day and hope that, you know, when they come home, that their, you know, house is intact and that they can safely enjoy those attributes that, you know, the county provides for in this community. And so it just, again, we don't want to be foolish about this, but my belief... And so it just, again, we don't want to be foolish about this, but my belief is, is that what we have before us this evening, and again, I don't want to, you know, make it so difficult that we don't have some other choices before us when you come back to us. And the way this kind of syncs up, it kind of makes it a little, a little odd, but that wasn't anybody's intention. Because if we make, you know, make a decision here this evening, as you just said, you're going to go back probably later this evening and start reworking budgets. But I do believe that we, you know, can find the capacity to do this, that it'll be a partial year of funding. But I also wanted to say that I think it needs to sync up with the other initiatives we put forward. And as much as I'm hopeful that we can bring those on sooner rather than later, I got to believe that just with some of the things that takes to put those in place, there's probably going to be some savings accrued that will have to get, you know, forwarded towards homeless initiatives and mental health and drug and alcohol treatment programs. We heard some very good success stories today and yesterday from folks who, you know, were at the depth of homelessness and were able to, through the assistance of others, you know, reclaim their lives and be productive and contributing members and happy members of our community. So, but I just, I guess I would just sum it by saying too, and certainly go back to questions, but I think we have an obligation to people in this county, to all the people in this county, to do our best as we do, and that's why we're here this evening, to try to, you know, find the budgetary balance, but also to meet some of those priorities. And I just think when it comes to the Parkway, I think, Patrick, you outlined it, you know, we've got competing crises here, but we have for a long time, and certainly I'll take my share of the responsibility for that, have not, I think, put in resources because of the choices we've made that really may have allowed us to combat some of the problems that we see. But certainly now, if you put this back, will allow us, I think, to have some betterment out there. And meanwhile, do what we got to do to try to help folks get into places where they get stable housing and get the services that will help them be in a better place in their lives as well. So, you know, whether we do the 5 million or something less, I think it's important that we do something, I think that, again, if we set forward with the 5 million this evening, that you'll bring a budget back to us. We'll have to debate that further two weeks from now and hopefully you'll be able to find some more capacity because I will push you on that from my particular point of view because I think there's probably a little more capacity to do more, you know, to help us do other things that are priorities for this board. So, anyway, Sue Frost, you had some questions, comments, and then-
Yes, I wanted to ask Nav, I know in the beginning of our budget discussions, we were talking about how our creditors were asking us to reduce those inter-fund loans more quickly. And this is showing 3.4 million that could potentially go to Parkway or pay down inter-fund loans or go to other programs. How much are we paying down on inter-fund loans this year? And, because this was targeted for paying down inter-fund loans, correct?
That's correct. What we agreed to, what the board gave us direction in June is we have a plan, a five-year plan to pay back those loans. The number is escaping me. Is it six, seven? It's about 7 million that you did approve in June for us to pay back. Our thought process has been is that if we had extra money, once we closed our books and we took care of some of the priority needs that the board had, we were going to recommend putting some against, accelerate the payment to satisfy some of the credit questions we have. So if, based on the decision you make today, if there's some left, that potentially is our recommendation will be back to you is to offset some of that. But the board does have a policy that we have shared with our creditors, with the rating agencies, that we have a plan. And the question then will become, are we going to stick to it every June? That's when we'll get tested.
Are we doing it this year?
Yes, we are. Current fiscal year we have-
The five-year plan?
Yes, we are.
This would have just sped it up.
It would have sped it up a little bit.
Further conversation about the, obviously we have some differences about the amounts, so I think there's, you know, support for going forward. I guess I would just say that I think, looking at the 5 million dollar column, I think to the point about the community prosecution, that I think it's been sufficiently answered and I think that that certainly could be left to be addressed at a future date based upon what you're going to come back with, I guess, working with the DA in November. I will say though, I think that on the animal care, maybe a halftime FTE that could be shared with the neighborhoods because this isn't just Parkway, it's neighborhoods as well. I mean, and again, if you have someone who, and I don't know logistically, certainly Dave Dickinson's here, how that works out, but to have that available both for the Parkways, and I guess we had to talk in the plurals here, but also for the neighborhoods because this cleanup is going to go in the neighborhoods. It's going to have the hot teams working outside the Parkway, obviously the park rangers and the other personnel assigned in the Parkway. And I think having an animal care position, at least a halftime, that would be shared by Parkways and neighborhoods could probably go a long way. And it might allow for some of the proactive stuff that doesn't otherwise, is not just about get calling when you got an emergency, it's also doing some of those things that help educate folks and not just homeless people. But, you know, we had some testimony this evening, people who, you know, take for granted, you know, that they can go out there and know there's probably a little chance that, you know, unless a ranger gives them some heads up on it.
Mr. Chair, can I make a suggestion about that? Because I think it's a good point. That's why earlier I mentioned that while there may not be calls for service all that frequently in the Parkway compared to urban environments or suburban environments in the incorporated neighborhoods, I would suggest that we do what I think I just heard you say, which is appropriate a half FTE to each, to neighborhoods and to the Parkway, but that we have a check back maybe within, I don't know, a quarter after it's been deployed, that's been deployed to see what the actual split is in terms of service calls.
It should be in April so that it comes back for the June budget. So we've had the discussion in advance.
Yeah, but my point here is specifically to see how that, the calls for service on animal care specifically are reflected-
On the numbers.
Compared to the split between neighborhoods and Parkway.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you on the April report back. And again, some of this might not get in place until January, February, so it's going to be a short experience level, maybe during even the wetter weather. But I think we're going to need to, again, as we go to budget building for ensuing fiscal year, we have, having good data is whatever we have available to us.
As we are for our five homeless initiatives. We're going to need to report back on that.
Exactly. I mean, you know, a lot of this is not going to roll out. And so Mr. Gill will have all kinds of savings that'll be plugging back into the budget calculation. But not intentionally, obviously. It's just what it takes in order to hire, to put in place, to get, you know, partners with some of the homeless services and citing of certain facilities and such, so. Okay, so do we want to have more discussion about the motion that's on the floor and any other iterations regarding that? Otherwise, you know, comments will be taken and then we can call for, call for a vote.
I just want to say, I, I'm going to vote against it because of the money, but I do appreciate the sentiment and the effort that went into putting it together and the discussion. I'm just not there on the money. I think we should start slower and work our way into it.
Okay. All right. You have anything else? Or if not, then so, was there any changes to the motion then?
Not, none other than the recognition of the animal care control.
And not funding the-
And the community prosecutor.
Okay.
I just want to be clear. So the community prosecutor will be out. Animal care stays in.
Well, yeah, let me stop there.
It just will split at 50/50, but as far as we're concerned, when we're coming back on September 6th, recognize the animal care cost.
Yeah, but on the community prosecutor, I thought we were going to-
We were going to use the community prosecutors from Arden Arcade and Downtown District.
I want to make sure when you say it's out, it's not, it's not necessarily out.
We want community prosecutors, we want someone else to pay for it.
Someone else to do, but we'll still have community prosecutor, but we're not, at this point, adding a position for that.
Right.
Yeah. And see how it works. And I think if, as described, the community prosecutor adds that much, that, you know, later time we-
Is it possible to get back, is it possible for that model for community prosecution in the Parkway to happen ahead of the overall staff deployment so that they can go, that person can go work part-time with what we currently appropriated for the regional park budget and the-
Yeah, what I was going to suggest is that there's a lot of different moving parts in here. Is that some of the deployment will happen sooner than later. We will absolutely come back in April, but as we start deploying this, there could be other check-ins with the board to kind of give you an idea of what is the experience we're getting out there. I want to make sure that as we deploy this, as we know, we, we're in uncharted territory, is that we don't know exactly what the demand might end up becoming at that point. And if the demand is higher, lower, I want to make sure we have the ability to come back, report back and make adjustments as we need. And if we find out that the community prosecutor is really needed out there, I want to have the ability to come back and have that discussion with the board members.
That's fair.
Okay, that's good.
I don't know whether we got this ask in before, but when you come back in April with results, whether you, we talked, we had talked a couple weeks ago on this in front of us about people that came out of the Parkway would have first shot at the new homeless triage, et cetera. And so can we have some information back on that, whether we're able to move them into those and what the results were? Please?
We'll add that.
And just one other, I think it was touched on in Rob's report yesterday afternoon. No, it was a little earlier today. The, sorry. The cleanup as it relates to both in the neighborhoods and in the Parkways, that we can begin that quickly because we, you know, it's sadly, you know, we've been chasing this and, you know, kudos to the 260 tons and the 66,000 tons or, all the garbage has been removed, but it seems to multiply faster than we can get to it. So I guess recognizing that there's the issue with the camps, but that have to, has to be handled in a certain way. I guess, can we get, is that something we can get up and going? You can get those teams, you got some intermittent workers? Let's supplement what we got. I guess I would just say that that's really important.
Now, we understand the urgency. We'll, as we bring this forward, we'll start implementing it.
And then just last thing, Mr. Chair, and then I respectfully like to call the question just because it's getting pretty, pretty late. I made some mention during Rob's staff report about some, two specific metrics. I'd like that to be noted and that we make sure that we look at not just putting people that are suffering homelessness into contact with services per se, but we track them through our continuum once they're coming off the Parkway. And number two, the somehow measuring accurately kind of the increase hopefully in legitimate recreational uses of the Parkway.
Okay. Maybe you called a question, but how are we going to track in the neighborhoods? That's the other thing, is that we're going to deploy folks. I think it's important to, again, you know, work with the sheriff and others because that's going to, you know, this is a neighborhood and Parkway's initiative, so.
I think what you saw today with the tracking is some of the ideas and options that we had presented, as we start implementing this, there's different performance measures we're going to be using beyond what we showed you as we start developing more and tracking this, we'll be reporting back particularly in April.
Okay. All right. Very good. So with that, a question has been called for. If there's nothing further, then we'll go ahead and punch up the vote board, please.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Peters and Frost voting no.
Okay. Thank you all for being with us. And again, thank you. I know that hours late, we still have, we have an off agenda speaker and we have some adjournments. And so you're welcome to stay with us. We'll probably be a few more minutes and then we will be adjourned. But we had an off agenda speaker who signed up early this afternoon and has been patient here, Julie Linderman. Is Julie still here? Okay, Julie, if you'll come forward. And then we have some adjournments. I know Supervisor Peters has a couple and Supervisor Cerny has one as well, so. Good evening, Ms. Linderman. Thank you for your patience as well.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you.
And members of the board, at this late hour, I'm very sorry to have to bring forward a request that I have learned in researching while these other sessions were going on is probably not possible. But I'm here to request that the Board of Supervisors approves a fee waiver for a zoning appeal because the CPAC has been informed by staff that they cannot appeal the zoning administrator's decision. That's not something they can do. And the public that had opposed the action has now got to figure out how to appeal it. And we don't have the money as individuals. It's a $3,935 filing fee. We had assumed that because the code section 613A suggests a CPAC could appeal with no filing fee, that, and it is a matter of community-wide interest throughout the Arden Arcade community, we had assumed that they would be able to file an appeal. But apparently, they can't file an appeal even though they could be free. And that leaves us stuck with a question that's a very big consternation to the public. The current fee schedule is exorbitant. I remember, I still have some memory of events in the past, but I do remember when redoing the zoning code and when blessing the guidelines and blessing the design review and the development guidelines and the user guide and so forth. I do remember discussion about how you didn't want to force the public out of the, out of the game in terms of filing an appeal. But as far as I can discern from the codes that are explicit, we're stuck. And I don't have that much money in my pocket to put up for an appeal or even to lay down for an appeal and then wait for the Board of Supervisors to decide whether or not they are going to waive the fee. And I'm really requesting that you help the people out. Do you understand what I'm asking?
So just real quickly, Ms. Linderman, so was an action that was supported by the CPAC?
The CPAC was not informed that if they didn't like all the parts of the program-
Okay.
They needed to deny it-
I got it.
-in order to have a comeback.
Okay. Right, in order to have the appeal.
Now, the evening of the CPAC meeting, there were three brand-new, never been there before, members of the council.
Okay.
And so far, the county's department, the community development, has been less than helpful.
Chair, in the interest of expediting some information here, I can lay out the process available. This is a CPAC decision that was approved, so the CPAC doesn't have the ability to appeal.
Right.
And where is that in code?
Just wait a minute, Ms. Linderman. So you can ask a question more, let our council go through what-
A constituent can file an appeal.
Right.
And upon that appeal, they submit a check for the filing fee, which is the $3,935, at which point the clerk schedules a request for a waiver hearing. Only the board can grant the waiver. They hold the check pending the outcome of the hearing. If the waiver is denied and the constituent doesn't want to move forward, the check can be returned. If it's denied and they want to move forward, then they deposit the check and they proceed with the hearing. If the waiver is granted, the clerk schedules the appeal hearing. In this instance, the board is the, again, the only authority to grant a fee waiver unless there was staff error, and that's not the case here.
Now, the CPAC approved it, it went to the zoning administrator who approved it.
Yes.
Okay. So to your question, I don't know, I don't have the code before me, and we certainly can reference the section. There is a procedure that's been approved by this board relative to how appeals can come with no, you know, no fee attached. I think what I did hear though, and this may be of help, is that, you know, you may not have the money to file the appeal, you said that, but you could put a check on deposit, it will be held in that cash. If the board were to deny the fee waiver- held in that cash. If the board were to deny the fee waiver, if I heard you correctly, then the check can be returned. So it basically is a placeholder. And then obviously if it was waived, then it would go forward. So that's a, you know, it's a bit of a risk, but really, really no risk, because again, as long as-
There's a risk. If it goes to the board and the board doesn't go with that opinion, then you've got a board meeting and-
Then the decision is made to whether to proceed.
Right. Well, right, whether to proceed.
But the risk, but you're telling me, I have combed and combed and combed the code. So I could not find this, that in fact, if the applicant for appeal deposits a check in the amount of $3,935 and requests a waiver, if the waiver is not granted, the applicant may simply, may retrieve their check and drop the appeal.
That's what I heard Ms. Dravon say. Okay, that may help some anyway. But, and I think you can talk to Mr. Dravon if you wanted to, Ms. Linderman, after. We're going to be, we got to do some adjournments. Thank you very much for being with us and certainly for your patience as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Okay, we have some, okay. So Ms. Peters and then Mr. Cern. Thank you.
Thank you. I have two adjournments tonight. The first is in memory of Bob Walters. Earlier this month, aggressive cancer took the life of Bob Walters, a director of the San Juan Water District who was elected to that board in 2006. He lived in Folsom and before that was a longtime resident in Fair Oaks, where he was an active member of the Fair Oaks Rotary Club. He was also a one-time member of the San Juan Unified School Board. He was a successful lawyer for over 42 years and moved to Sacramento County as part of Governor Reagan's transition team. We get a lot of good people coming in on transition teams for the governor. At one time, he served as a chief of staff for the Speaker of the Assembly. He was a state lobbyist with his main clients being school districts or businesses involved in the healthcare industry. He was support, he supported many public agencies in our area and served on the Board of Directors for the Association of California Water Agencies, Joint Powers, Insurance Authority. He regularly attended my community coffee meetings in Fair Oaks, always greeting everyone with a big smile at those early morning meetings. And we'll miss seeing him and would like to adjourn in his memory. Also, there's an old saying, the show must go on, but the next performance of the John Skinner Band will be without its leader and trumpet player, John Skinner, who passed away last week. John was a resident of Carmichael and his musical career spanned more than 50 years. According to his wife, Susan Maxwell Skinner, who was also the band's vocalist, John was given a trumpet by his mother. And at age 11, he saw Rafael Mendez, a famous trumpet soloist, and the rest was history. In high school, he worked as a bandleader at holiday resorts and continued trumpet playing in college. And after graduating, John volunteered for the Air Force during the Vietnam War, where he flew C-141 Starlifters transporting supplies and wounded soldiers. And everywhere he went, his trumpet came to. While in the Air Force, he played in bands in Fiji, Japan, Australia, and Hong Kong. He later worked as a freight pilot for the Flying Tigers line, where he'd play his trumpet in the cargo hold during his breaks. I think he met his wife in Hawaii while he was working for Flying Tigers, too. When he returned to Sacramento, he founded the John Skinner Band, playing at Governor Wilson's birthday parties and entertaining dancers at the Town and Country Village through the 80s. Throughout his career, John played with Ray Charles, Donna Summers, The Temptations, and Luciano Pavarotti. After his retirement as a pilot, he continued to play and invested more in music education, mentoring young musicians. During the summers, he often went around the country to whether his musical education for students. In his last concert at Carmichael Park on August 6th, John played the trumpet solo from Louis Armstrong's What a Wonderful World. His health had deteriorated to the point where he couldn't stand on stage anymore, so his wife Susan held the microphone for him as he played from the crowd. People stood up and cried during his performance. A memorial concert will be later this month, and I think it's fitting that the board adjourned a day in John's memory.
Thanks, Susan. I just note before we do the other adjournment, that I knew Bob Walters almost 40 years. He ran for supervisor twice, once for District 5 and once for District 4.
Is that right?
Yeah, and first ran when Toby sought the seat back in 1978. And, but just a wonderful guy. And you certainly outlined some of his accomplishments, but considered him a good friend and was very saddened to hear about both of those folks. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this evening, I'd like to have us adjourn in honor of Mario Gutierrez. One of our region's giants in healthcare philanthropy passed away unexpectedly a week ago. His name is Mario Gutierrez. He was a friend of mine, dear friend of my family's, and a friend to many healthcare leaders in the state of California. There is much I could say about Mario, so I will limit my comments to a few. He was among the region's most nationally recognized healthcare advocates. A decade ago, when he worked for the California Endowment, he received the highest honor that the philanthropy community bestows on someone in the healthcare field. It is called the Terrence Keenan Leadership Award. Recipients are recognized for work that is distinguished by leadership, innovation, and outstanding achievement. Mario was honored for the impact his leadership had on the health and living conditions of agricultural workers throughout the state. He also happened to be the first Latino in the country to receive this prestigious national award. Since 2011, Mario had served as the executive director of the Center for Connected Health Policy, where he developed programs to better integrate telehealth technology into California's healthcare system, especially in rural communities. While at the California Rural Indian Health Board and later at Sierra Health Foundation, Mario also championed health issues facing Native Americans and people with AIDS. For two decades, Mario used his vacation time to travel the world, supporting his wife, plastic surgeon, plastic surgeon, Dr. Deborah Johnson, who donated her time fixing cleft palates and other facial deformities for disadvantaged children. Mr. Chair, the last comment I'll make is that Mario was a kind and generous man. As conveyed by that big smile of his, he had a zest for life that was very infectious. When he wasn't giving his time to the less fortunate in our society and our community, he was the kind of husband, father, and human being that we can only aspire to be. I'd like to respectfully have us adjourn in honor and memory of Mario Gutierrez.
Okay. Thank you, Phil. Thank you, Susan. All right, then, in closing, we acknowledge three big holes in the heart of this community, the loss of Bob Walters, John Skinner, Mario Gutierrez. And we will adjourn in their memory and send our sympathies and good thoughts to their families and to all of our friends who knew them. So with that, we will stand in adjournment and be back here in a couple of weeks.